Suggests that DCLs collected from development will help to pay for, and it talks about what, what DCLs helped to pay for. I'm wondering if, if staff could specifically share if there's any ratio as to what the DCLs will pay for here onsite, if it will be going towards childcare, or will those just be going into any of the possible projects or amenities that we see DCLs used for? As in paragraph.
Hi there, Teen Fan, Senior Rezoning Planner. Thanks for that question, Counselor. The DCL is set by the Vancouver Charter in terms of what it can go to, and childcare is one of those pieces. And I think, as is typical in terms of our process, DCLs get compiled into a pool when it's collected through rezonings or otherwise, other developments. And then we allocate that according to our capital planning process, which is a four-year capital planning process, in which we bring together DCLs, CACs, and other contributions. And we set that at that time. So currently, currently, we don't have an understanding of how that is going to be allocated, but it is set according to the Charter.
Of course, just to follow up to that, would you then determine it based on what the highest need is? If it's for, as says on the list, social or nonprofit housing or childcare facilities? Depending on the needs, that's what staff would allocate it to or suggest to be allocated to. Is that correct?
I think that is a large part of it, for sure. It's a, it's a pretty rigorous staff process in terms of leading up to that capital planning process. And so we determine it a lot based on need and also based on what the public benefit strategy in the Canby corridor sets out.
Okay, thanks. And then just one more question, sorry to put you on the spot about this, not asking for, for you to articulate the entire DCL policy, but because we are in a quasi judicial body, we sit as a quasi judicial body for public hearing, would, would it be fair to ask the question or say that even though there's not a specific project that these DCLs right now are being allocated for in the report, are being earmarked for, we should consider that that would be a contribution towards one, if not more, of the many listed options as the DCLs are laid out in the policy as per the Vancouver Charter, as you've noted?
Yes.
Is it fair to say?
That's absolutely fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all of my questions, Chair.
Thanks, Counselor DeGenova. And Counselor Dominado's questions.
Thanks, Chair. Can I ask questions of the applicant at this time?
Absolutely.
Great. I'm just wondering if the applicant could expand on the planning specifically for, the report references the possibility of smaller scale townhouse buildings on one part of, one of the buildings, but then I think with respect to others, there's some challenge around the depth of the lot. So if they could just expand on what we might see in terms of ground, or ground oriented components of this development.
Counselor, this is Tim Young from Peterson. The, the, the buildings, in terms of ground oriented development, because there is no commercial retail in this type of development, the three buildings will all have ground oriented garden suites. The intent would be that they would have fairly generous decks with a slight step up to delineate the, the public and the private space. But as currently designed, we are not anticipating putting any townhomes in the project. So I'm happy, happy to elaborate further if you have further questions.
I, I think just for clarity, I'm referencing the report, and it talks about smaller scale townhouse building located at the lane. So that's not accurate. That's on page six of the report.
I believe that's just, just, that, that's, that's a reasonable question, Counselor. Just reading the report now, my understanding is that is referring more towards the Canby corridor plan and not specific to this project percentage.
Okay, helpful to have that clarity because the way I had read it was, it was specific to this project. So appreciate that. And then in the context of the overall development, how, what percentage is geared at families?
Currently, in terms of two bed plus, we are at 66% of the, of the unit.
Great, thank you.
Your questions, Counselor Dominado?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Great, great. Okay, wonderful. Thanks very much for answering those questions. We can now move on to hearing from speakers. And any speakers who wish to speak to counsel on this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 73311 pound before the close of the speaker's list. Phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, if there, there are any, could come forward to the podium. Clerk, just verifying, are there any speakers in the council chambers?
There are no speakers in the chamber, Chair Carr.
Are there speakers on the line?
But there is one speaker on the line.
Okay. And I, do you have their name, or shall I just call out that name? Or call, ask them to state their name?
Tracy Moore.
Oh, great. Okay, Tracy Moore, if you're on the line, go ahead. Just state your name, and you have the five minutes to address counsel.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Can you hear me fine?
Perfectly, go ahead.
So good evening, Madam Chair and council members. It's Tracy Moyer. I'm the Chair of Oakridge-Langara area residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I recognize this is a very long week for you, so on this particular application, my comments will be brief. This is a really unusual situation because the new street that will be punched through this site at 35th Avenue. OLR speaks in support of this application and specifically how the city has handled the fact that there is a southmost lot, which in the hands of a developer is basically worthless. We would be screaming with our loudest voices if this family owning the southmost lot would not get fair value for their property to be part of this assembly. But the Canby corridor plan does recognize the financial challenge here, allows the developer to build two extra stories on one of the buildings to allow compensation for that southmost lot landowner. And therefore, we can support the treatment of the new street and also that particular family in the overall application. As you know, OLR is generally very concerned about excessive heights over and above what the Canby Call, the corridor plan calls for. But in this particular situation, this was anticipated. This has been followed as the plan suggests, and therefore, we are pleased to support this. We are a little bit relieved that an eight-story rental is not going in instead of a six-story strata, because that would be the most dominant building, whether you look at Canby or Ash Avenue. So we're relieved it's six stories. And that's my comment. So thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Great, thank you very much. And you do have questions? If you just want to stay on the line to answer them? Counselor DeGenova, two questions up to five.
Thanks very much for, for, for sharing your opinion on this project. I'm wondering if, if you see any benefits in the development cost levies that the applicant would be contributing through this project?
Any benefits, like specific to that area?
Well, yes, there, there would be benefits, and I outlined them in an earlier question. I'm not sure if you were on the line at that time, but those could go to things such as childcare parks, other facilities, nonprofits, social housing, an array of, of different options within DCLs, and they would be decided at a later date. But do you see value in having that in your, your community?
There is not just value, but an absolute requirement to have fees going into the city to pay for what's required because of the densification.
Of course. I was just wondering if, if that was something that you were also in support of, as you'd spoken in support of the strata. Just was, was wondering if you had any specific thoughts on that? If not, you don't need to share that. You're not obligated to answer my question.
There's always a trade-off, right? Density costs money. And every application will come forward as a requirement of rezoning, whether it's CAC in kind or cash. So my understanding, that's an absolute requirement. So I, I guess I'm not quite understanding the, the question.
I was just, I'm, I'm so sorry. I was wondering if there were any specific amenities that you were looking forward to in your neighborhood? Although we wouldn't be specific with those because the DCL policy is what it is. It does outline what it can be used for. Is there anything specific that you can share with us? Because you're talking about your community and the context of this application in your community as to what benefits that you would welcome for your community?
We have not, as a group, looked at that fine detail to give direction or suggestions on how the, the fees should be applied for this particular application.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing. And I'm sorry if my questions were confusing. I was trying to be broad and not too specific on that because that policy, again, doesn't specify where exactly that, those funds will go at this time.
Okay, thank you, Counselor DeGenova. You do still have more questions, Tracy. Counselor, we, over to you.
Yeah, Tracy, I really appreciate your point of view on that there is a plan in place and that everyone on this block was treated fairly. And the property owner that is now going to have a street where their house is was compensated by the extra height on the buildings. Because we're right in the middle of a Vancouver Plan process where we're looking to do this, where we can create communities and that the people know what is happening to their community, and everyone is treated fairly. So can you, so I just want to guess verify from you that you feel that because this is following a plan that the community understood and everyone's treated fairly, you're supportive of this project?
OLR's position is what is in a plan is generally supported. We will look at the minutia on, on some occasions. An application that coming before you and a couple more items, although it follows the plan, will be in opposition to that. But in general, on behalf of Oakridge-Langara area residents, the bulk of the time, if a plan has been approved and the building will meet the plan very closely, we're not talking looking at wiggle room here because we've seen a lot of that in the past. But without any kind of wiggle room, we will generally come out in support of that application.
Okay, really appreciate that comment. Thank you very much.
Great, and that is it for your questions. But really appreciate you calling in and the work you've done for OLR and, and representing their voice here. Thank you. So counsel, or certainly clerk, is there anyone else on the line right now to speak?
There are no other speakers on the line.
Okay, then I will proceed with calling for more speakers. The first call, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 77311 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council, council chamber can come forward. Are there any speakers in the chambers or on the line, clerk?
No speakers are in the chamber and no speakers are on the line.
Thank you, I will call a second time. If there are any speakers for this item wishing to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 73311 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the chamber come forward or on the line? Any speakers on the line, clerk?
Chair Carr, there are no speakers on the line and no speakers in the chamber.
Thank you. So this is my third time. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 73311 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber can come forward to the podium. Not quite yet. We are, that was my third time. So I am going to give a five-minute recess to see if anyone else calls or comes forward. And so see you in five minutes, counsel. We have Kormik that I can, is that right? Great, welcome back, everyone. And so as, clerk, are there any other speakers either in the chambers or on the line?
No, no speakers on the line and no speakers in the chamber.
Great, thank you. So as few or no public comments have been received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comment and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Tim Young from Peterson, we do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
Staff have no closing comments, thank you.
Great. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff? Counselor DeGenova, go ahead.
No, I jumped the gun. I was prepared to move a motion. The recommendations in motion.
That, then, that is exactly the next question I would have asked. So thank you for moving. And do we have a second?
Second, Counselor Dominado.
Okay, that was popular. So any debate? Counselor DeGenova, you want to speak to it?
I cannot take myself off the queue. I've tried, thank you.
Do you know, I can't advance you off. The clerk must have done it. You were stuck for me, too. So we, we are, oh, Counselor Swanson, go ahead to the issue.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this, like I, because it's 133 strata. We're still not dealing with affordability in the Canby corridor. We did get a report on that, that it basically says we won't get information on how to deal with more affordability until phase three. And meanwhile, we're rezoning all this land for expensive strata. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, that's good. I think that's the end of speakers list on this item. So clerk, could you move us to a vote, please? Counselor Boyle, you haven't yet voted? Okay, that passes with just one in opposition, which is Counselor Swanson. Thank you very much, staff and applicant. So we are now moving on to item three, rezoning 8460 Ash Street and 8495 Canby Street. Just start off first by asking if anyone has a conflict of interest on this item three? Saying, one clerk, will you read the application summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by Intercorp Ash Street Developments to rezone 8460 Ash Street and 8495 Canby Street from R2 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit a mixed-use development with 16-story, 27-story, and 31-story buildings with ground floor commercial space, 125 social housing units, and 524 secured market rental units. A height of 103 meters and a floor space ratio of 8.26 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Twenty-three pieces of correspondence in support. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thanks so much. I'm just going to start off by asking or letting people know that they can speak to the item. So if you do wish to speak, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 73311 pound. And do that before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available also on live stream. And there will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Scott Erdman, rezoning planner, rezoning center of planning or of urban design and sustainability here to present the application. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Just want to double check first that you can hear me and that you can see the presentation on your screens.
All is good.
Right? Good evening, Mayor and counsel. My name is Scott Erdman, and I am the rezoning planner for this rezoning application on Ash and Canby Street. The site is an L-shaped property between Ash and Canby Street, just south of Southwest Marine Drive, shown in red on the map. The site is home to the Ashley Mar Housing Cooperative, a residential social housing co-op and is currently developed with 54 two-story wood-framed townhouses built in 1983. There are multiple other existing social housing and co-op developments in the area just to the north. Marine Drive Station is one block to the east, and several new mixed-use towers have been built surrounding the station, ranging in height from 14 to 35 stories. Blocks to the south and east are zoned for light industrial uses. And there is also an active rezoning application for the Denny's site directly across the street to the west. The site is close to several neighborhood amenities, including Ash Park and Marple Oakridge Family Place, both just one block to the north. The site is well-served by transit, being located one block away from the Marine Drive Canada Line Station and bus loop. Shopping and services are also available at the transit hub. The site is within the Marple Community Plan, which was approved by council in 2014. The intent of the plan is to guide and enable positive change in Marple over 30 years and includes a public benefit strategy. The Marple Plan identified the Ashley Mar site as one where rezoning can be considered to renew and increase the stock of existing social housing. New development was anticipated to be up to 12 stories in height with commercial uses on the ground floor fronting Canby Street. Projects can include a market housing component to assist with funding. The plan also noted that modest increases in height and density can be considered to help with project viability. In July of 2019, the proponents of Ashley Mar Co-op submitted a rezoning application to develop the site. Sorry, wrong screen. I'm going to start this screen again. In July of 2019, the proponents of Ashley Mar Co-op submitted a rezoning application to develop the site. the proponents of Ashley Mar Co-op submitted our zoning application to redevelop the site with renewed and expanded co-op housing, in addition to rental housing that exceeded the height anticipated by the Marple Plan. A rent roll provided by the co-op indicates that the housing charges for existing residents meet the city's definition of social housing. In February of 2020, staff brought forward an issues report for council's consideration, seeking permission for staff to review the Ashley Mar rezoning application and consider other inquiries in the area to enable more social and rental housing. The issues report also included criteria for evaluating these proposals, and the recommendations of the report received support from council. In response to council's approval of the issues report, staff undertook an urban design review of the site and surrounding area and identified several urban design objectives to inform review of this proposal. The objectives include opportunities to enhance the area as a unique gateway into Vancouver for people traveling on the Canada Line, provide additional height in line with the other towers already built around the Skytrain Station, and enhance the connection to the Fraser River through green infrastructure and the existing tree canopy. These broad urban design objectives resulted in a revised design for the proposal. The revisions included shifting the proposed building height to the Canby Tower to enhance the gateway experience when traveling on the Canada Line, adjustments to the form and massing to improve overall urban design performance, and retention of at least nine mature trees, and setbacks in funding for green infrastructure along Ash Street. Should council approve this rezoning, the urban design objectives will continue to inform future design development through the conditions of approval in Appendix B. Following the issues report, staff received a revised rezoning application for the site in January of this year. The proposal before you tonight includes a 16-story building to become the new home for the Ashley Mar Co-op. It includes one-for-one replacement of the existing 54 units, plus an additional 71 units, for a total of 125 social housing units. The renewal and expansion of the co-op is supported by the provision of rental housing on the site in a 27-story and a 31-story building with 524 secured market rental units. Both the social housing and rental housing units exceed the family room requirements, and rooftop common amenity spaces are proposed for all three buildings. The proposal also includes one commercial retail unit fronting Canby Street, a mid-block connection on the south end of the site, and an overall density of 8.26 FSR. If approved, this project would generate over 2,200 off-site and onsite construction jobs. Under this proposal, the Ashley Mara Housing Co-op would continue to own and operate the replacement and expansion units in their new building. The high degree of affordability would be maintained in their new building, with 85% of the units proposed to be rented to households with incomes at or below housing income limits. 60% of the units would be family units, exceeding the city's minimum requirements. A term sheet was developed by staff and the applicant team to guide the future operation and maintain the affordability of the co-op. The applicant has provided a resident relocation plan that meets the city's tenant relocation and protection policy. This plan ensures that housing affordability is maintained in both their interim and future units in the new building, with existing members being able to return to their current housing charges that are no more than 30% of their household income. The co-op members will receive support with their relocation needs, including any special circumstances that residents may have. Ongoing communication and engagement with the members has taken place at every stage and will continue for future project stages until completion. For the market rental units, this table shows the proposed average starting rents under the DCL waiver and the average household income served in the blue column, in addition to average rent in newer Westside Buildings in the green column. It also shows the costs associated with homeownership, including monthly costs and how much would be needed for a minimum 10% down payment. The market rental units provide a more affordable housing alternative to homeownership for more than half of Vancouver's population. Two applicant-led open houses were held as in-person events prior to COVID-19. This was followed by a city-led virtual open house earlier this year. Staff have received a total of 32 responses to this application. Feedback included support for the proposed height, massing, density, and building design, in addition to support for the provision of rental housing and increased social housing stock. Concerns included comments regarding the building's height, massing, and density, or potential parking and traffic impacts on the area, and the lack of neighborhood public amenities. Staff have reviewed the comments and using the guidelines of the Marple Plan and the criteria in the issues report, have determined that the proposal is an appropriate design response, given the surrounding high-density context, while recognizing that the proposed density is needed to ensure the viability of the co-op renewal and expansion. Conditions have been included to further improve the design of the proposal. Public benefits generated by this project include a substantial amount of affordable housing in the form of a renewed and expanded Ashley Mar Housing Co-op with 125 social housing units and 524 new secured market rental units in close proximity to transit, amenities, shopping, and services. In addition, the applicant will also be required to pay DCLs and provide a public art contribution. In conclusion, this proposal is consistent with the affordable housing goals of the Marple Community Plan and the evaluation criteria of the Ashley Mar Issues Report. This application, if approved, would deliver a renewed and expanded home for the Ashley Mar Housing Co-op with 125 social housing units, in addition to 524 secured market rental units. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. And before we turn to questions, is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Hi, I'm Mayor and Council. It's Evan Alagretto from Intercorp.
Great, welcome.
We do have a presentation. It's gonna be a combination of three people. I just want to make sure everyone's on the line before we start.
For sure, no problem.
So the owners rep and and the board are here. We just wanted to make sure that the presentation, if staff has a presentation or if you'd like us to share the screen with the presentation. Oh, there it is. Perfect.
I'm seeing it, so.
Thank you, the council, for allowing Ashley Mar to present our development for your consideration. My name is Aziz Ibrahim. I'm one of the board members of Ashley Mar Co-op. I have been involved with our project for the last seven years. I also have Jerome Mirani from Colliers, who is Ashley Mar's owner's representative, and Evan from Intercorp to support me today. Next slide. Ashley Mar Co-op began housing families in 1983. We have 54 townhouse units. Our main focus has been to offer housing stability to families and individuals of all ages. Our community is very diverse. We come from many different cultural and socioeconomic backgrounds. We have members from all over the world, mainly families and seniors. Our co-op has been operating successfully for the last 38 years, fulfilling our obligations to the members and the stakeholders, and now own our land is mortgage-free. Next slide. Existing townhouses have outlived their practical usefulness and no longer meet the needs of our current members. Two-level structures with stairs are posing a problem for our increasing senior population. We have a number of seniors who are sleeping in the living room because of difficulty going up and down the stairs. In addition, existing units no longer serve the growing needs of many families who are under housed, including mine. I have three young boys in one room, six people.
We're not hearing you right now.
Yeah, get a little bit emotional, counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just take a deep breath. It's all right. We're patient.
I have three young boys in one room, six people living in lineup every morning for a washroom, the early for school, for school and work. So this project is very important to our current members and the future members. So thank you for your support. I'm passing to Jerome Mirani from Colliers World, who is owner's representative.
Great, thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Aziz. As you mentioned, so our team has been involved with the project for the last five years as owners representative. The idea for redevelopment started in 2013 as a significant redevelopment around the Skytrain made it an opportune time to seek out a redevelopment partner. In 2016, Intercorp was the chosen partner after proposals from 12 different developers who responded to an RFP. Throughout this process, the Board of Ashley Mar has done its utmost best to maintain four core principles that was heard from all members. Number one, maintain affordable housing charges for all members. Number two, provide affordable housing to the larger larger membership or new members. Number three, that the co-op remain financially sustainable going forward. And number four, taking the utmost care of members during relocation. Other redevelopment options were explored but did not deliver on the core principles above. Next slide, please. It's important that council knows that Ashley Mar has been the driving force throughout redevelopment. Elected Board of Directors have held meetings weekly and bi-weekly with Intercorp over the last six years to ensure that these core redevelopment values are maintained. Since 2013, thousands of hours of time have been volunteered by various members of the board to get to this point. The board has engaged in meaningful consultation with all members to try to make the new building an accurate reflection of the democratic values of the co-op. Members have provided input and voted on interior design, landscape, building facade, unit layouts, unit sizing, and amenity spaces. Input was solicited through various in-person workshops with members and consultants along with virtual forums throughout COVID. Members also overwhelmingly voted in favor of working with Intercorp and the mortgage that was required for redevelopment. Next slide, please. Getting to this point, I believe it's important to highlight some of the big successes of this project that will be enjoyed by the overall membership as well as new members in the building. Units for families and seniors have been intentionally designed for their needs. Members' direct input on the design of their units is a unique quality for affordable or social housing projects. The Ashley Mar Building will also have a variety of indoor and outdoor amenity spaces for both younger and older members of the co-op. And most importantly, that affordability for members will be guaranteed going forward. Next slide, please. Taking care of members' needs has been at the core of this redevelopment. The project budget has ensured that no member has an increase in housing charges during relocation while adhering to the City of Vancouver Tenant Relocation Framework. Items like moving, deposits, transferring services, et cetera, have all been taken care of for members during relocation. There will be no out-of-pocket expenses. As many of the members have school-aged children, the members have begun the tenant relocation process early in summer 2021 to avoid families moving during mid-school year and the disruption that that would cause. To date, Somerville, the tenant relocation consultant, has successfully located 50 out of 54 members to suitable alternative accommodations. In summary, I just want to say how meaningful it's been able to represent Ashley Mar in such a unique project that is truly a reflection of the overall membership. Our team has worked on a number of social housing projects in the city, and the Ashley Mar redevelopment has been by far the most deliberative in the consultation with its members. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for considering to support this very important project. And I'll turn it over to Evan Alagretto from Intercorp to say a few last words.
Next slide, thank you. Thank you, Aziz and Drad. Just wanted a couple of quick moment points. This project's been led by Ashley Mar, and you know, we were so pleased to be the Development and Construction Manager. Without Ashley Mar's board, the members, this this project wouldn't have gone anywhere. As Aziz said, it's been seven years. Without the vision and dedication of the co-op, yeah, we're not here today. Intercorp has been a 40-year, has a 40-year history developing communities. And we've developed over 25,000 homes. This is the first project where we actually help people to like, where we saw the impacts every day. Makes me proud. This project is quadrupling the amount to rental with adding doubling the amount to co-op units. Anyways, we're thankful, Mayor and Council. Sorry, Aziz made me emotional. But we're so pleased to be here because we're so proud of what we've been able to deliver for the co-op. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you don't have to apologize for being emotional and proud over a project. You do have questions, or there are questions from counselors, quite a few counselors. So I'm going to, and these questions counselors can be to either the applicant or to staff. Counselor DeGenova, you are first, up to five minutes.
Thank you so much. And it's hard to frame my questions in a way that really follow or encompass, you know, the depth of not only emotion, but of a powerful what you've shared personally with us is, I just want to say that. But because we are sitting in a quasi judicial body, and I have to base this on on policy and the application before me, forgive me if my questions seem technical, but I'm wondering if you can share to me how important it is to you. You know, we just dealt with another project that was strata, and we're looking here at ownership and rental. And in the current context of the policy that we would be looking at if we didn't consider the issues report that was brought to us, and I'm very much appreciated by our city staff and I want to thank them. I'm just wondering, would you have been able to work within the current policy at all? So what we're considering tonight, we wouldn't be able to consider. It's my understanding that we would only be considering strata, and there wouldn't be that opportunity for rental housing or inclusivity or affordability, or maybe even the community you speak of. Would would either of you like to share or answer that question? Or maybe Evan, I should let you kind of delegate. My apologies.
No, that's okay. I think I can answer that one. I mean, the original Markle Plan was 12 stories here, but there was a key. The key concept in the Markle Plan was to explore opportunities to expand the social housing opportunities. And I mean, we we really expanded it, but staff supported, you know, our proposal, and then that's what brought the issues report. So while technically the policy that wasn't there, but the issues report has resulted in policy that facilitated this new form of development. that facilitated this new form of development. And then I think, like I heard from Scott before, is there's an active rezoning at the Denny's site that is now responding to the Ashley Mar policy issues report. So it's significantly going to add the amount of non-market and rental housing in this transit node. Did that answer your question?
It does. And do you hope you pave the way for others who are trying to, you know, include nonprofits and co-ops and inclusivity and amenities and benefits, as you've described so personally to us?
Well, I hope so. Like, I think you heard blood, sweat, and tears went into this project, and it's not over yet. And, you know, and again, I want to thank the co-op, like they had the vision to take this on. And without the leadership at the co-op, it would be really, we wouldn't have been here. And so the, I would say, you know, the one thing for other nonprofits out there doing this is, you know, it's a long process, and you have to continue to always work hard and, you know, staying committed will get you through it.
Okay, thanks. And even if that, that's a partnership such as the one you have, I'm hearing that loud and clear for them making notes on this. I did want to ask if it's all right, maybe it's more of a technical question, so I'll defer to the three of you as to who should answer it. But did you consider BC Housing's Housing Hub and their Affordable Home Ownership program? I know we have one at the City of Vancouver. It went through many iterations, but unfortunately is still sort of awaiting a charter change. But maybe the Housing Hub created something even better than that? I'm just wondering, in looking at affordable ownership, did that model work with your pro forma or with what you were considering in looking at sort of BC Housing offering a second mortgage as a way of, I suppose, including people in ownership?
So it's really hard to mix the different ownership structures in buildings with like, even if it's affordable home ownership and rental. It's just, you know, the groups that own these buildings in the future, it's really hard to, you know, generate the capital from the private market to do that. So we've explored that. We've explored the BC Housing Hub construction financing for rental. And we've explored the CMHC RCFI financing as well. We're going to continue, if we're successful tonight, we're going to continue with working with BC Housing and CMHC after the fact, which could result in, well, which would result in more affordability in the market component, which is a condition of both of those programs.
Thank you. That's my time. So I'm glad I didn't need to move a second round because you answered my other question. Thank you.
Councillor Dominado, over to you.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for the presentations on this. I had a couple of follow-up questions. A couple of questions geared at Ashley Mar Co-op, and I'm curious, two questions. One, about the relocation, it sounds like all of the members will be relocated, and will they be in Vancouver? And then two, do you anticipate that most of the members will come back after the redevelopment? It sounds like there was a lot of support for this in the beginning anyways, to go down this path. So I'm just curious if you anticipate that most members will want to come back.
Yes, most of, almost all our members are located in Vancouver. Yes, most of them are, I guess, they remain a member of Ashley Mar Co-op during their relocation, and they have, they are coming back as far as we know. Thank you.
Councillor Dominado, are you there?
Thanks, Chair, and thank you for that. I appreciate that. I also wanted to circle back on the, Evan, around the retail commercial. I think it referenced in the staff presentation that there was a one, one commercial unit upgrade. Is that right? Did I understand that correctly?
Correct. It's on Canby Street.
On Canby. I'm curious, from your perspective, if there was an opportunity to include any other units or is it just given the design and space there fronting Canby? If you could just comment or expand on that, that would be helpful.
I mean, the frontage of the Canby Street building is not that long. So when you put the lobby of the residential building, there's just a lobby, and then the remaining amount of the frontage is a commercial unit. So, I mean, we say it's one commercial unit, it could be subdivided, split into two. But there's, there's just not a lot of frontage along Canby. There's a lot more on Ash Street, but the, there's no plan, the plan is not to include commercial on Ash.
Thanks for clarifying that. And just, I don't have the slide in for me, but Steph had a slide up that were just referencing the rents that are anticipated and that they're comparable to what we would anticipate for rents on the west side. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
The DCL rates are about, are pegged essentially to the CMHC average rates on the west side, west side of Vancouver.
Okay, thanks. That's all my questions right now, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Dominado. Councillor Kirby Young, over to you for up to five.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to direct my questions to Evan to start if I can. And the first one is just really an understanding, because this is a really unique project, as you said. And it's just understanding the model of how you're able to deliver this. So got a few questions. I'll try to fire through them quickly. In terms of the, when you stated maintaining affordability for members and continuing to provide a need-based subsidy, Ashley Mar owned the land originally, and they will own their co-op in full. So it's entirely their ability to set and pull in their own housing charges. Is that right?
Correct. The model, we've created a model for them, so they're, they're, I think it's 80%. The model is derived at 85% of the Hills rates. And then there's a subsidy pool on that. The, the co-op is putting a mortgage on their property, and the cash flow easily covers the mortgage, especially if we get CMHC financing and funds the subsidy. But Aziz is, not Aziz, Drad from Colliers could speak to that a little bit better.
Well, maybe before you, I don't want to necessarily delve down quite that far. I just want to go back a bit to the sort of the higher level. So does, does Ashley Mar retain, you know, you can tell me which questions you're able to answer, but does Ashley Mar retain complete ownership of the property or including the rental buildings? Or is that parceled off?
Oh, so yeah, there's, their property is subdivided. They're retaining, they're retaining ownership of their building and the land that they're on. So it's, it's a new parcel on the two, the two other lots would be owned by an institution, like a pension fund that is going to own and maintain it in the future.
Okay. And then Intercorax is the developer?
Yeah, we're the developer. Not to get into it, but like, you know, we've essentially to make, to fund this is we're only a small chunk. So, you know, our development returns only need to, we only need to make a, we only make a really small return on the projects. That's it. We're making it work.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate you sharing that because it's helpful context to sort of understand how you're able to pull off that amount of rental and co-op housing on the site. So I appreciate that. My next question, it might be for you, I'd also, but Aziz spoke to quite impactfully around what I would describe as sound like being under housed in terms of space for families. So can you speak to sort of size of the units or are families being given the option to move into units with more bedrooms or how does, how will that provide? How will that work in terms of what people were in before in terms of space and, you know, relative size for their family versus what they'll be in the new co-op building?
Yeah, so thanks for reminding me. I had that in my notes, but I lost track. Over 60% of the units are family-sized homes. We have three, four, and five-bedroom homes. So I, and that speaks to the designing the units for the members. So we've got homes for all the members so that, you know, Aziz's family and there's other families that need bedrooms. So we've designed to it. So that's another one of the benefits of this project is we've, you know, you're getting large units because of, you know, the co-op renewal.
That's amazing. I don't, it's hard to recall, but I think we've had a project that might have had a four-bedroom in it or three. It's, I haven't seen any discounts that have had up to five bedrooms in it and not that many in one building. I'm not aware of any. Are you in terms of a?
I don't think I've ever seen it done.
So this is, this is pretty significant. That was sort of, I guess, a question versus a comment. This is pretty significant in terms of, it's a little, it's a little bit of a first. Is that, is that a fair comment?
I think so, like, especially for a privately funded project where there's, right now, there's, other than the DCL waiver, there's no government grants.
Okay. Is there anything else other than the family sizing that you didn't comment that we should know about the project?
I mean, maybe I'll ask Drad and Aziz if you guys had anything else to add.
There's not very many seconds left, only 10, unfortunately.
I think, I think just from Ashley Mar's perspective, similar to the family units, a lot of the accessibility provisions for a lot of the older members have been directly considered. And so we are really, really, really intentional with soliciting information from all the members about what they need for their future homes. So it's, it's, it is a first. It's pretty amazing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks, Councillor Kirby. That is your time. Onto Councillor Weave for up to five minutes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one is on the relocation. Are members of the co-op paying the same rate that they're currently paying throughout this process? And was there funding to do the transition?
Yes, all the members are paying their current housing charges. We're topping up the difference. And all of the members are housed based on their occupancy requirements in their co-op. So if you needed a bedroom, you'd be in a home. Yeah.
Okay. And then can you talk a little bit more about the 85% Hills that, and the subsidy pool? So they've sold off two parcels of property and they put a mortgage on their property. So can you just talk a little bit more about the financing of the co-op and how it's going to be sustainable? And are they able to bring in low housing charges to ensure that there's families that are at the lower end of the income bracket would be able to become members and be part of this community?
Right. Do you want to take one?
Yeah, for Aziz from Ashley Mar Co-op. Yeah, we have, we factored the 20% of household at subsidy, which is low 30%. And the other, the other new building, new members will be paid about 85% of the Hills. That's how we factor in on our financial viability during assessment.
Okay, so 85% Hills is still pretty high. So recognizing that you've been able to sell off both sides, there wasn't an ability to find a model where you could reduce that to a lower amount? Or is it the housing charges? Or what are the biggest charges that are not allowing you to be able to provide lower rents?
I think, to add to that, I think the subsidy pool gets people down as low as like shelter rates.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's based on need. So, I mean, so that's, that's, we also have the, like, the co-op also is allowed to have some members have a higher rent than Hills, a small percentage, so that they can fund additional money to the subsidy pool. So the people need it will get it. So every year they do a, and it's income test, the subsidy pool as well.
Okay, that's good to know. I guess the other one, you talked about in the project about how you wanted to connect, I guess, to staff, connect this project better to the Fraser River. I know you talked about a tree lined along the one street. Can you tell about what other elements are connecting this to the land and waters of this surrounding area?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to defer that question to my colleague Derek Robinson from Urban Design. Evening, Council. Derek Robinson, Development Planner. I would say the primary connection to the Fraser River with this project directly would be through the Park Connector Street. And so through revisions, through the rezoning application, there was a revised submission that was made, and several improvements came out of that. And so one was a setback of the parcade, which allows a stormwater tree trench within the Ash Street right of way. And in addition, there'll be a wider sidewalk, there'll be a pedestrian signal at Ash and Marine, some cycle infrastructure, and through the development permit process, should council approve this rezoning, further work with engineering in terms of pollinator and bird-friendly plantings, new street trees and those types of designs. So primarily, it's about stormwater retention and cycle infrastructure with those north-south connections, you know, south of Marine, down to the, down to the river. Again, this being viewed as one project, you know, in a larger context through a, through a review of the area.
Perfect. Thanks for that. Appreciate that. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Great. Thank you, Councillor Weave. And finally, Councillor Swanson, up to five.
Yeah, I have one comment for the applicant.
You're breaking up just a bit. Councillor Swanson, if you could just get a little closer to your mic.
Okay. For the applicant, what is the size of the units for seniors?
In the, is, I don't know off the top of my head, Drad, would you know? But the units, like, in the, I think in the policy report, there's a range of units, the sizes, the sizes of the range. And I'd say generally speaking, the 54 replacement units are much larger than what I would consider market. And then the additional units are more closer to, like, like the DCL waiver size, policy sizes.
So would they be more like studios?
No, like, there's, like I said, it's 60% family housing, so that's two bedrooms and larger. The seniors?
The ones that are, the ones that are for seniors.
So this, so I think all the, yeah, so, I mean, the, Aziz can speak to this more, but the people will move around based on the needs, all the current seniors. I can't remember, Aziz, do you mind speaking to that, if they're moving to?
Evan, we've got Perkins and Will's here if you want.
Oh, yeah.
If Sean is available or David.
Generally, generally, the one bedrooms throughout the co-op are the same size as, and the two bedrooms are the same size throughout the co-op. So if a senior or an elderly person is in the one bedroom, then that, that room size is up to 550 feet.
Do you have studios in the co-op?
There are some studios in the co-op. There's six. About 5% of the units are.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask staff is, do you think that this could be a good model for other co-ops to try and follow?
Thank you, Councillor Swanson. I'm going to defer to Dan Garrison from Housing to respond to that question.
Hi, Councillor. Thanks for the question. Dan Garrison, Assistant Director, Planning for Housing Policy. Yeah, I mean, I think it, I think partnerships like this, one for the redevelopment of sites like this, particularly aging non-market housing sites, could be an approach that could be used going forward. There's really two approaches you can consider. One of them is a fully non-market approach, a fully social housing approach, which of course would rely on senior government funding. That's not, that's not, of course, available in every circumstance. And so in sites where, you know, some heightened density are appropriate, such as across the street from a, from a transit station, there, there will be opportunities to repeat a model like this going forward as we look at expanding the supply of affordable housing and also looking at the pressures on co-ops and existing nonprofit housing providers with regard to the pressure to renew the stock. So we could see other, other sort of public-private partnerships like this going forward in places where the more heightened density are appropriate.
So one more question is the 85% at Hills is actually quite. So one more question is the eighty-five percented hills is actually quite remarkable. It's way more, a way higher percent of lower income people than our social housing definition of thirty percented hills requires. So how is the co-op able to do this? Is this because of anticipated profits from their rental housing?
Well, I, I think there's a couple of factors that are factoring into that. One, one is that the co-op is providing the land. They have, they now own the land as the, as the co-op members. As Aziz said, they now have the land with no mortgage on it. And so.
It's not leased from the city.
So they can contribute the land at no cost to the project or as, as an equity contribution to the project. But the other factor, is in fact, the, the increased density for the rental, which generates value, which is going towards, um, uh, the project, which helps them to keep the, the need to, to, the size of the mortgage, the size of the financing they need down. And so that allows them to, to charge deeper affordability, lower housing charges.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's it for your question. So thank you very much for those. And, um, thank you for answering, Aziz, Gerard, Evan, and staff. And, uh, we are now, Council, moving on to hearing from the public. So first, just call the numbers. If there are any speakers wishing to speak to Council on this item, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code seven three three one one pound before the close of the speakers list. This phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Um, and so Clerk, I'm wondering if, if there are any speakers in council chambers or if there are any speakers on the line. I know we do have some speakers on the speakers list, so wondering if they are there.
Speaker one is not on the line. Uh, we have speaker two who is in the chamber.
Great. David Wilson then, if you want to come to the podium.
My name is, uh, David Wilson. I've been a member of the Ashley Mar Co-op for about twelve years and have lived in Vancouver for twenty-four years. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and two other co-op members, Derek Fang and Jelena Zhang. Our position is that the Vancouver City Council vote no on the rezoning application for eight four six zero Ash Street and eight four nine five Cambie Street. That it be returned to the planning department until the concerns I bring up today are adequately dealt with. There are two major concerns. The first is the resident relocation plan. It's inadequate. It does not match the economic realities of our city. The spirit of the resident relocation plan is to give displaced members an opportunity to stay within Marpole, excuse me, and Vancouver. Number two is ambiguous language surrounding how members will return. We need a more thoughtful, well-worded, agreement that guarantees units of similar size and square footage and bedrooms as metrics. Let me paint a picture. I live in a two-bedroom townhouse with a hundred square foot ground level deck. The Canada Line and Marine Great Gateway is one block away. My home is within walking distance to a complex complete with core services and amenities, including a community-scale healthcare, a fitness club, a movie theater, essential retail, like grocery shops and pharmacies in a park. It takes me eighteen minutes to get to my work at Service Canada at Tenth and Main. My housing charge, which is not subsidized, is eight hundred and sixty-four dollars a month. The offer I've been provided to relocate is an additional one thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. That means I'm looking for a comparable two-bedroom unit in the city of Vancouver for twenty-three hundred dollars. Is that what it costs to rent a comparable two-bedroom townhouse unit in our city? According to the October twenty-twenty-one National Rent Report by rentals.ca, the current market, market rate for an average two-bedroom unit in Vancouver is two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Zumper dot com estimates the average two-bedroom unit to be three thousand fifty dollars. The current range for two-bedroom townhouse rentals on the west side of Vancouver of similar size and location to the unit I currently occupy is in the three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollar range. So how is twenty-three hundred dollars arrived at? This amount appears to be based on research with regard to the rental market in two thousand eighteen nineteen and was initially offered in September twenty twenty. It is now November twenty twenty-one. The world has changed. Let's recognize the sacrifice of our co-op members that they're making in moving their households. Let's minimize the disruption of their stable home lives and see that they have the opportunity to have high-quality options during the interim location, relocation in their community. Many of my fellow members have found places within the budget offered. In Jelena's case, she moved to Langara Gardens. It's one kilometer from Canada Line and driving is now her mode of travel. She's also discovered extra unexpected costs such as laundry. The laundry at our co-op was fifty cents for a wash and a dry. Her laundry there now is two dollars and twenty-five cents. Also, parking is sixty dollars a month. At our co-op, it was included. Add that together and it's an extra eighteen hundred dollars a year, a hundred fifty dollars a month, not to mention gas and the environmental footprint. Other members I know have moved to the Vancouver-Burnaby border. It's more affordable. Yes, this means that they've had to leave their constituency of Vancouver. But what are their options? There's another reason I'm asking you to send this back to planning. Members are not in a position to negotiate. Our units are in disrepair because meaningful maintenance was halted ten years ago by our co-op in an effort to keep rents reasonable. The result now is crushing pressure on the members and the board to accept what is offered. The return, oh, our members have been told that anyone who currently has a two-bedroom will receive a two-bedroom unit in the new building. With two-bedroom units in the new building ranging from five hundred and seventy to eleven twenty-six square feet, how will it be decided who gets what size unit and in what location? As the architectural drawings are now complete, the selection can begin before the relocation, so people can plan accordingly. However, this has not been done. Why? To be frank, beyond spirited discussions, there has been some unpleasantness at Ashley Mar. Those like me who have spoken up, out about tenant resident relocation and a lack of clarity around how units will be assigned have experienced pressure and intimidation. Some members have even had their membership threatened. In Appendix E of the referral report, it states that units with less than a maximum of six units are, in two bedrooms, may be occupied by households with one individual. There are many more households that have, uh, I think there's about fifteen units that have one or a couple that, that need those. This conflicts with agreements the co-op has had members sign stating that they would get the same number of bedrooms they currently have. So in conclusion, please vote no for now. It's a wonderful project, but with, without a solid resident relocation plan, it's not viable. In conclusion, please vote no and send this back to the planning department until the concerns of Jelena, Derek, and I have brought up are adequately dealt with. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, thank you. And just before I turn to questions, um, from your Councilor Kirby Young, I just wanted to verify that, um, I'd been informed, but not, um, on public record, that there were two other members on the line that, um, that, uh, David Wilson was also speaking for. So we had up to eight minutes. Is that correct, Clerk?
Yes, that is correct.
Great. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that all of Council knew that there was extra time given for that, for that reason. Councilor Kirby Young, go ahead with your questions.
Yeah, thank you for speaking to Council. I just wanted to make sure I really understood and was clear around what you're referring to in terms of the size of units and how that related to in terms of the current size versus commitment in the new building. Can you just review that for me?
Me? You want me to speak? Okay.
Yep. That's a question for you.
The, the current unit size that I have right now is seven hundred and five square feet. The metrics for, um, this project and for moving into the new building, um, have been based on bedrooms. So two bedrooms, but a two-bedroom could be five hundred and fifty square feet. A two-bedroom could be six hundred square feet. So.
So your concern is not that the name of number of bedrooms remains consistent, but the overall unit potentially be smaller?
Yeah, yeah, that, that there's a comparable size, um, in square footage and, and comparable bedrooms.
Okay. Was there any discussion, um, with respects to sometimes that, due to the cost of construction for new buildings and that, that it does oftentimes result in smaller units? Was that part of any discussions that you had or any information that was shared with you?
Yeah, the, uh, proposed agreement that they've asked us to sign states that we'd be, um, uh, moved upon the, uh, return to the, um, new building, that we would get the same amount of bedrooms. But that doesn't state how many square footage. So.
No, I, I, I understand that. I just wonder if there was a discussion that, because oftentimes, like, it's, it's more expensive now in terms of construction to construct the building. So the units often end up being smaller. And I'm just wondering if that information was, if that was explained to you, is that, I'm assuming that's probably the rationale.
Um, uh, yeah, I'm not, uh, wouldn't be able to speak to that.
Okay. Thank you for speaking, Council. Appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Kirby Young. Um, and that's it for your questions. Uh, uh, thank you, David. And thank you, Jelena and Derek for being on the line. Also, uh, to perform, uh, to form part of the, the delegation. Um, Clerk, I'm moving on to the other, um, speakers. Uh, is Speaker Three, Carissa Darlene on the line?
Speaker Three is not on the line.
Okay, thank you. Speaker Four, Jean McDonald.
Uh, Speaker Four is on the line. Just one moment. We'll see if there's a technical issue.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, hello. Is this Jean, um, McDonald?
It is.
Okay, go ahead. Um, you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Councilmember. My name is Jean McDonald, and I'm here in support of the Ashley Mar Project. I have lived in Ashley Mar Co-op for nine years and love being a part of this co-op. And as of recently, I've become a board member. I came to live here when I lost my very high-paying income job. I left my apartment in Yellstown and moved to Ashley Mar Co-op. Had it not been for Ashley Mar's financial hardship, I'm not sure I wouldn't be homeless. I'm grateful to have affordable housing and being close to transit, which has made it easy for me to get to work. The one thing that this co-op has allowed is having pets, which I find crucial to most members' wellbeing. My dog is everything to me. I mean, my boyfriend too, but definitely my dogs. We recently had to relocate, which is probably the most stress-free, easy experience I've had to date. I was able to secure a rental in a two-bedroom, brand-new rental in the River District, which is ten minutes away from Ashley Mar. It has allowed me to keep my dog, which was a big concern for me. We recently, um, this, this co-op is a very diverse group of people of all different backgrounds, from young families to seniors. We have families who have raised children in the co-op, who are now looking for homes as well, as young families, single mothers, fathers, seniors in our community, who are looking for that affordable housing, which the project will help accommodate. We've had a chance to go, have a chance to go from fifty-four townhouses, um, co-op to a hundred and twenty-five unit co-op with more amenity spaces, which again, is, this will help alleviate a huge need in our community for affordable housing. And I can't stress enough how important this redevelopment, redevelopment is for our members of our co-op. Thank you very much for listening.
And thank you very much for taking the time to, to speak to Council. We very much appreciate it. There are, there are no questions for you tonight, but, um, you spoke very clearly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to Speaker Five, Sean Sullivan. Is Sean Sullivan on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, perfectly. You have up to five minutes to speak to Council.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members of Council. My name's Sean Sullivan. Um, do I have an echo?
You have a tiny bit of an echo, but it's, it's fine. We can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. Um, so yeah, I've been a member of the co-op for the last twelve years. I've been on the board for the last eight years. I was one of the ones that was approached by, by colleagues with this opportunity. And right away, I was excited. I have two young boys, um, and they've grown up in the co-op and have made many friends. We've all flourished. It's been, it's an amazing experience for all the three of us. Um, I think, one of the things that I was most passionate about is making a green building that I don't think was, um, acknowledged very much. And it's, it, it, it's, it's always been a passion of mine to have something green that I could live in. And we spent many workshops doing that. Plus on top of that, as I think it was mentioned, we spent many hours as a board and many different board members throughout the seven years putting together this project in collaboration with all the membership. And it's been such a pleasure working with the community to bring people what we need at an affordable price, where all our rents will still be in, or affordable. Um, we've had many consultants, some which we kept, some which we didn't, that didn't fit with us. It's, um, sorry, I'm going through my notes. I didn't actually write a speech. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention is that we've had fifty people move out. I'm in a place that I'm very happy with, um, and that the, the financial, um, pop-up was absolutely perfect for myself. Um, another thing that I wanted to mention is in regards to the new units or the, the replaceable unit, uh, I think there was a misconception that the people may be moving into smaller units where we've allotted all the fifty-four members, original members will be moving into, they will get first choice of all the units. So if it's an elderly person that wants to move into a studio, they'll get the first choice over the new people that are moving in. And, and vice versa, if people are under housed, they'll be able to move into something that is more adequate towards the family size. I, I think this, I, I'm emotional on the other side. I totally appreciate my, appreciate my brother, um, Aziz getting emotional in, in, in the way he did. I'm excited. I'm really excited to see this thing move forward. I am so passionate about this project. I've put in thousands of hours myself. And I'm really looking forward to seeing this thing go through and having our membership move back into the community and, and seeing it flourish again. It, it, it's, as, as was mentioned, it's been a little bit, uh, um, ah, what am I saying? Well, it's, the foundation has been moving and shifting. So all the units have suffered because of this. Now we get to move in and create a new community in a hub of Vancouver that has excellent access to the rest of the city. And yeah, this is just absolutely amazing that we've come this far and to have this opportunity and, and have found the perfect partners and the perfect consultants to create this momentum and hopefully create a, uh, a precedent for future co-ops that are in the, uh, R ninety-five co-op as well. Thank you very much for your time, and I vote support.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, very clearly stated. Yeah, there are no questions for you. Very much appreciate you speaking to us. Uh, Council, um, I'm just going to pause for a second. I can only see five people, um, on screen right now. I want to make sure we have quorum. Um, I know that one counselor has stepped away for a few minutes. Okay, I, we're fine. We've got quorum now. Thank you. Or I can seek quorum. Um, great. So we are now, um, moving to the next speaker, six, Dennis Fan. Is Dennis Fan on the line?
Yes, I am.
Yes, we can hear you clearly. Go ahead. Yeah, up to five minutes.
Okay, yeah, sure. I know your time is so precious. Okay, I'm Dennis. I have lived in Ashley Mar Co-op with my wife and daughter for over seventeen years. I support this redevelopment project mainly, mainly based on three reasons. First, it's a corporal complex. Deciding to do this project is a collective decision. Majority of members voted to favor this project. I respect Co-op's voting, sorry, Co-op's voting results, and support this group decision. Most of us are tied up for various repairs, we don't want to experience any major housing problems. The redevelopment will give us a new apartment building, which makes us less worries on the future housing problems. Second, the existing members are ordered to grandfather their current rent rates, it means that current Co-op members' benefits will be protected, the impacts on existing members will be controlled to a minimum level. In addition, the redevelopment will add about 500 market rents and 70 affordable Co-op units. Vancouver needs more available renters, especially affordable housing. Federal, provincial, and city governments are all working hard on it. This project meets government's planning. Last, but not least, I take partnership with each Co-op. Ashley Mar Co-op's relocation and its interim financial support has been assured, which makes this project having a smooth, smooth start. That's all for my tonight's speech, thank you for your listening.
Thank you for speaking to us, was very clearly stated, very much appreciate that. No questions for you, but again, thank you so much for speaking to us. Moving on to Speaker Seven, Ashley Satharik.
Yep, I'm here.
Great, okay, we can hear you, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay, so I was a single mother moving to Ashley Mar at the age of 21. My son is now almost 22 years old, and he has grown up in the Co-op. Living here allowed me to go back to school, raise my son, and create a successful career for myself. Ashley Mar allowed me and my son to live the last 20 years, and communities that made us feel safe and welcome. I'm so excited for this redevelopment, that we can create additional units to allow more people to live in a community that is affordable and inclusive. I've also been on the board since the beginning of this project, almost seven years. We've all volunteered countless hours to make this project to ensure the best for our current members, and also for future members. We're all so excited to be creating more affordable housing in the city of Vancouver, and along with that, offering the community to our current members and future members, not just a place to live. Well, moving can be very stressful and cause a lot of anxiety, especially when you've lived in the same place for 20 years and weren't planning on moving. The relocation process has been great, my son and I are living in a great new place that is exactly where we wanted to be located, and is more than what I was expecting. The move itself was made easier by all the support that was offered. I'm just looking forward to moving forward with this, and creating a great new place for more people to join. Thank you.
Great, and thank you, I don't see any questions to you, but you were very clear with your comments, and very much appreciate, I think, by all of Council. So we are moving on to Speaker Eight, Ryujikita. Is Ryujikita on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Wonderful. Yes, so my name's Ryujikita, and as you can tell, it's not a Canadian name, it's a Japanese name. I am a resident, sorry, I should apologize, I should correct, I am a past resident, as I have moved out, but still a current member of Ashley Co-op. First of all, I'd like to thank the council members for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I should state my position on the rezoning of the Ashley Mar Co-op, I decided unquestionably in favor of it. Once again, I'm not very well spoken, nor do I have an affinity towards public speaking, so I do apologize in advance if I do start talking in circles, but I want to ensure my voice is heard in regards to this matter. I myself, I am a second-generation member of this Co-op, first being my mother, she was a single mother with two young boys, we grew up on the east side of Vancouver, and this Co-op itself was only set into my mother in insurance that we had a comfortable and safe upbringing. Myself being a second generation, we, I have been a member of this Co-op, and so a paying member, I guess, would be, for lack of a better term, for the past 25-plus years. I've chosen to continue to live at this Co-op, so I can be within close proximity of my aging mother. I would also add, I was able to raise two children, paying both their way through university, affording them luxury to start their adult life debt-free, and quite frankly, it's in no small part to being a part of this cooperative, without it, I don't think I could have done so. I mean, for those who haven't lived in a Co-op, it may not be clear as to how it functions and the benefits of it, I mean, Co-op is nonprofit, I mean, our goal here, when I say "our" because I'm a member, our goal isn't to make money for a certain individual or corporation, my apologies to inter-Corp who's helping build the apartment area, but the benefit is solely for the people that do reside there, and for future members of the cooperative. And put it in simple terms, I'm not sure if any of you have lived in an apartment before I have, I mean, in the Co-op, if the fridge breaks, it gets replaced immediately, or repaired immediately. I mean, there's no concern as to the bottom line in terms of profit, we take care of our members. I know there's been some concerns, I guess, brought up in regards to income levels of the members, but again, what needs to be kept in mind is, all our subsidizing is done internally, so basically, those that make more subsidize the housing charges of those that quote-unquote make less. If all were making quote "less," I guess, there wouldn't be a "more" to balance from that. I mean, I personally, as I said, I grew up for spending a substantial part of my childhood living in East Vancouver, so we're talking north of Hastings Street and west of New Nymo, it wasn't a pleasant place, so moving to this Co-op was, for me, a godsend, you know, moving to a beautiful, brand-new Co-op 38-plus years ago. I'm hoping this Co-op continues to be what it is, and it's a diverse mix of social and economic backgrounds, I mean, our Co-op consists of families, working individuals, as well as retirees, so retirees, including my mother, of various ethnicities and different backgrounds. And if I might add, I personally like most of my neighbors, and I see them, my friends do, I do hope I get to see them soon, that this isn't a long, drawn-out process. I mean, we're talking 71 additional homes, not units, these are homes for people. I'm hoping with below-market, and hopefully increasingly below-market housing charges, I mean, at least for a family, more money in the pocket so they could spend quality time, or possibly that a recent graduate who didn't have the fortune of having the tuition paid by their parents for one reason, to be able to pay that money back for his student loans, or for the elderly, so on personal level, provide them with a comfortable, worry-free home, or even for me, again, that single parent, hopefully not having to work the second job, because the rent will be a lot more affordable, essentially offering them a better quality of life. I mean, Ashley Mar Co-op, we're just the beginning, as more of these Co-ops reach maturity, it's important for them to be able to see what's possible, being us as a model, hopefully. And that's really all I have to share, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, well, that was to time, so that was good, and you definitely did have your voice heard, so thank you for speaking, there aren't any questions for you, but you were very clear in your statements. So Council, that does take us at the end of the list, and Clerk, I'm going to call for.
Chair Carr, I believe there's, there is one other speaker on the line.
Oh, one of the other speakers?
Speaker Nine.
Oh, Speaker Nine, great, okay, go ahead, and what's the name, maybe Speaker Nine, if you could give, state your name first, and then you'll have up to five minutes.
Good evening, mayors and members of Council, can you hear me well?
Yes, can I hear you well, and if you wouldn't mind also telling me whether you're a resident of Vancouver, yeah, thank you.
Yes, my name is Sylvain Selaire, and I'm working for Moto, the car-share Co-op, and on behalf of Moto, I would like to express our support for this rezoning application. Moto and the applicant have agreed in principle to provide six electric shared vehicles to be parked at the proposed development, for the benefit of the residents and the community at large, and for the lifetime of the development, to allow more than 500 residents of this proposed development to join Moto's car-sharing program for free. Moto has a vision for Vancouver's future, of a city that is more affordable, more vibrant towards citizens and businesses, more resilient to the challenges that climate change lays ahead of us, and we also believe that you, members of Council, share this vision. Building more homes near rapid transit and jobs, along with providing more opportunities for people to walk, cycle, and use public transit and share vehicles, while reducing automobile dependency, is critical to the realization of our vision, and we believe that this application is moving the city closer, the city closer toward our vision of a better Vancouver, and for this reason, we encourage all members of Council to approve this rezoning application, thank you.
And thank you, you do have questions, if you don't mind remaining on the line to answer them. Counselor Kirby Young, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, hi, thanks for speaking to Council, I wonder if you can just advise the six car-share spots that will be available, which building are they located in, or how are they accessible?
I don't think that it's a detail exactly that I would be able to answer, what I can say, though, is that, something for certain, is that the parking spaces will be available, or accessible, pardon me, 24/7, to all members of the car-sharing program, and the intent is that some vehicles be delivered with the initial phase of the development, so as soon as some folks live in the building, they can start use car-sharing and don't have to rely on their own car.
Okay, but it hasn't been determined yet whether they'll be in Rental Building One, Rental Building Two, or the Co-op building?
That's correct, that's certainly a question that the applicant may be able to answer better than me at this point.
Okay, but any Co-op, or any Moto member citywide can access the vehicle?
Correct, so that means that folks who live in the building or outside of the building would be able to use these vehicles. The intent is really for this amenity to be a neighborhood amenity.
Okay, and you said, did I hear you say correctly, six, was there any discussion around the opportunity to grow the amount of, the number of vehicles over time?
Currently, that's the number that we have been discussing, six vehicles, all-electric. If there is an organic need for more vehicles to be, you know, added over time, I would hope that we can, and if some parking spaces are available, I would hope that additional can be added, but at this point, my understanding is that there wouldn't be more vehicles committed as part of the application, but again, that may be something that the applicant can respond to either tonight or in a subsequent conversation.
Okay, hopefully, maybe they'll address that in their closing comments, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Counselor Kirby Young, and thank you very much, Sylvain, that's it for your questions, very much appreciate you coming to speak to us tonight. Are there any other speakers on the line, Clerk?
There are no other speakers on the line, and there are no other speakers in the chamber.
Thank you, then I am going to call out, I'll do it three times, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to Council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 73311 pound, before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber can come forward to the podium. Clerk, are there any speakers on the line or in chambers?
No, no speakers in the chamber or online.
Thank you, so I'm going to call again, if there are any additional speakers for this item who want to speak to Council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 73311 pound, before the close of speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Again, any speakers in the council chamber or on the line, Clerk?
Yes, no, no speakers on the line and no speakers in the chamber.
Great, okay, this is my third time, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to Council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 73311 pound, before the close of the speakers' list. That phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream, and if there are any speaker or clerk, maybe you can advise if there's any speakers, well, I'll actually wait, now I'll take a five-minute break, and then I'll ask you again if there's any available speaker, so Council members, it's a five-minute break now. Clerk, do we have any other speakers in chambers or on the line?
We have no speakers on the line and we have no more speakers in the chamber.
Great. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. And as few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close to receive the public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and making the decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Yes, this is Aziz Ibrahim from Ashley Mar Board.
Yes, Chair, go ahead.
Thank you for your support. The Ashley Mar Board has done its best over the last eight years to meet all of the needs of the members. We're proud of the relocation process, worry about all reasonable special accommodations are provided for all the members. And all the members who need extra bedrooms have been provided as well. The project will provide suitable housing for my family and many others who are priced out of the city where there is torrent and to afford. This project will provide affordable housing for many more members of working families for the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And council, sorry, and staff, do you have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff, thank you.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for staff? And I see that some of you do. This is just a staff only, as you know. First, Counselor Kirby Young.
Actually, I don't have a question. I was going to move the recommendation, but I'm happy to wait if Counselor DeGenova has questions.
I do have a question.
You have questions, Counselor DeGenova?
And I'm happy to let Counselor Kirby Young move the recommendations if she'd like. I just, I wanted to ask staff if this, in going forward and considering other projects that will be coming forward, considering the district schedules and the fact that there's an issues report regarding Ashley Mar's and the co-op and the mix of rental and strata and the mar pole plan, which right now really doesn't allow much more than condo and CAC. I'm just wondering if this, if this could be used in a way to set a precedent for future projects.
Staff?
Thank you for the question, Counselor DeGenova. This is Teresa O'Donnell, the GM of PDS. I do think it is a, it could be used as a president, particularly to unlock some of these older co-op sites that are, if they don't have funding from higher levels of government, then I do think this is a key to unlocking some of those properties and helping those folks find ways to redevelop their properties and move into more modern accommodations. However, there's a lot of density packed into this site and so that's one caution. Because we were right here at the, at the at the Skyway, Skytrain station, it would handle the density. But, but these types of projects will require quite a bit of density to make these numbers work. But it is a site, and I do think it was a very reasonable way to unlock some of the sites right there around Ashley Mar.
Thanks very much. Just a follow-up question to that. You had mentioned that this could work for co-ops in the future, looking to, you know, move forward, revitalize, redevelop. But what about nonprofit housing? And, and the reason I ask this is I have to consider this application in the context of what that looks like in the neighborhood and the community and in our current policies. And our current policies don't really allow this, but they also don't really allow, not only for co-ops to do this, but they don't really allow this for nonprofits that per se have a joint venture or may partner with a private developer, as we're kind of seeing this co-op do here. So are there other opportunities for other applicants just down the road? Just wondering if this, this might, may actually be something that, that instead of being the exception, we see this becoming more of the community and this encouraging that?
Yes, absolutely. I do think it's a model. And we were very lucky to partner with Intercorp on this. I think they've been very creative. We've looked at dozens of different models and solutions and we finally landed on something that we could all agree with. So we're lucky to have a really good development partner with Intercorp and the Ashley Mar co-op residents themselves and the board.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And with that being said, that's the end of my questions. Chair, I'm happy to second the motion, but I'll get off the queue so Counselor Kirby Young can move it.
Counselor Kirby Young, over to you then.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I'm happy to move the recommendations.
Second.
Thank you.
And if I can.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I'm really happy to support this project. I think, I'll probably use some of the words that our Director of Planning just used in terms of unlocking the site. But I think it's, it's been unlocked with a specific purpose and a goal, which is to deliver the housing that we desperately need. And in this case, delivering hundreds of rental units, 524 market rental units. And then not only replacing the co-op and retaining affordability and enabling all members to come back, but really effectively more than doubling the amount of co-op units, which is pretty significant. I think that it does take innovative approaches because we haven't seen the senior level government investment funding. And so that requires a bit of innovation here and it's not an easy project to take on. So I am actually, well, there, well, let me say this, there's a lot of heart that we heard from both the developer partner and from the co-op. And to hear that from both sides and the alignment is also unusual. And yes, we have to look at it from a policy perspective, but I have to admit the heart piece of it is pretty compelling. I think that this project is exceptional for a number of reasons, because it's delivering two of the housing tenures and types that we have, that are, we're prioritizing. It allows people to come back, as I said, it's retaining affordability at 60% family units, which is phenomenal, because it's really difficult for families with kids to find multi-bedroom units. And to also hear about the impact that it was going to make when Aziz spoke about his situation and his family being underhoused is also very compelling, as is taking care of our seniors and recognizing that we have an increasingly aging population. And I think that oftentimes as a society, we are probably, I think measured by how we look after people like our seniors and other generations that have come before us. So for me, this checks a lot of boxes. I don't mind it being precedent-setting if it's delivering a lot of value from that perspective. And I don't see this taking advantage of unlocking density in terms of just delivering strata or other units. I think it's actually bringing much-needed housing, or actually what I can really say is homes, because people honestly felt connected to the co-op and the other people, the neighbors, the community they have had for, about what was about 38 years now, I think since 1983. So for me, this checks a lot of boxes and I'm really happy to support it. And I appreciate everybody that's been involved in doing the work on this one. It certainly appears to be a labor of love. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Kirby Young. And over to you, Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks so much. I also want to speak in support of this. And I really want to, I want to thank all of the speakers. I want to start by doing that. And I, I do that in saying that I understand and I don't want to omit that I heard some speakers speak against this and that they were concerned about this specific application, but not about moving forward. And perhaps it was more in the details. I'm hoping that, that as things move forward with this project, if it is passed tonight, not going to assume anyone else's vote, that there will be those opportunities to work together. And I think that that's what's so wonderful about co-ops is that they're, they are collaborative and that people can come together and be open and honest and really live in a community within a community. I also really want to thank Azim for stepping up and, and sharing your story. You could have just talked about the overall benefits and made this very much about the logistics, but instead you shared with us, you know, the difficulties that you have faced finding housing in Vancouver and in this situation and how it will change things for you. And I think that, you know, we have to consider a continuum of intergenerational living. I can say that I actually, for a couple of years, lived very much near this area, just on 49th and Canby. And I did so after caring for my great aunt who passed away at 99 and, and staying with her there for a while. But also now that, you know, many years later, having my own child, I view things differently and as a parent and, you know, as someone trying to live in Vancouver and, and understanding affordable housing and the struggles with that, I really want to appreciate and thank you for sticking with this. I also really want to appreciate Intercorp and stepping, you know, Evan and your team for stepping up here and, and what you've added to this project. I think that it's really important to mention that. Because often in partnerships like this, it can be work to move forward. And, but I think that, that it's rewarding. And I'm hoping that in fact, that this won't be the exception, that we will, you know, to our Director of Planning, Design and Sustainability's comment, that, you know, we may see other opportunities and that you will encourage not only other applicants, but other developers to partner with nonprofits to build other projects like this in this neighborhood and throughout our city. Too often I've heard, and this is one of the reasons that I advocated before for inboard and board-like bedrooms, stories of children not only sleeping in, you know, one room with multiple siblings. And that's, there's nothing wrong with that, but I understand that that cannot be ideal for some families. But also, you know, families who are turning their, you know, sort of closets or pantry spaces into little alcoves or bedrooms. I think that we have to do what we can to make sure that we make Vancouver not only livable, but affordable for families in our city. And I appreciate that there are also some amenities and contributions that come with this. I think that it's really important to consider that in the context of what these families will need, because there are, there is family housing included in this project. And I also think that one of the things that I absolutely love is the model of sustainability and how this will help the co-op to sustain itself. So I have another minute, but I'll try not to go on because I'd just like to see this move forward. I wholeheartedly support it. And I really want to just thank our staff for, you know, taking the time to think outside the box and to move forward with that Ashley Mars issues report that has brought us here. And thanks to everyone, to the co-op, to the developer partner and to our staff and all the speakers tonight.
Thanks, Counselor DeGenova. Counselor Dominado?
Thanks Chair, and I'd also like to reflect some comments with respect to this proposal. And a thank you to the speakers that came in person and also those who called in, those who both spoke in opposition for various reasons, but also those in support. Couple of things that have stood out for me, both when this initial report came forward a number of months ago, but also now, was the opportunity here for renewal. And, and it was highlighted again this evening, speaking specifically about the renewal of the co-op, but it was highlighted in the presentation about how this is really member-driven. And, you know, hearkening on the recent conversations we've had in the more northern part of the city, around Falls Creek South, we've heard loud and clear that the co-op model has enormous benefits. And we hear that from the members. And my mom actually, funny enough, finished off her last few years of her life down in this area, but had desperately wanted to get into a co-op years before and there was often long wait lists. And, and in great part because of the affordability it offers for families. And so I see a fantastic opportunity for renewal here. Really appreciate that it's been member-driven and, and that they've sought out obviously a development partner in this. And heard very clearly the emotion in Evan's voice there this evening and how powerful that has been is that focus on a kind of a collaborative partnership to achieve multiple goals, the renewal of the co-op. But also the other landing piece in this is the added secure market rental, which we also need in the city as we know, given the vacancy rate. And so that's another positive for me that I see in this. Also that there's a significant focus on family-oriented space in this. So we heard from Ashley Mar about the fact that large families are underhoused. Also that seniors, increasingly the spaces aren't accessible. And so this is going to address a number of needs on a number of spectrums of family life. Those who may have elders living with them, as I do, or have young children or multiple family members living together. And so I really appreciated that context that was added to this. And that we also need to acknowledge that, that with public transit there, that makes a lot of sense to be adding this density at this location and giving people an opportunity. to be adding this density at this location and giving people an opportunity to be in the city of Vancouver. And so I'm going to support this proposal. And I thank all those who've been involved in the development of it and bringing it forward this evening. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Dominado. And that does take us at the end of summary comments by councilors. So I think Clerk, you can move us to a vote now, please. And that is passed unanimously. Thank you, Council. And that does move us to the last item on our agenda, rezoning at 5812-5844 Canby Street. So first of all, does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item four? I don't see any. Clerk, could you know, please read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by IBI Group to rezone 5812 to 5844 Canby Street from C2 Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit a mixed-use development with 33-story strata titled building and a 12-story office building, including ground floor commercial space, a childcare facility and a youth center. A height of 104.3 meters and a floor space ratio of 10.16 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary recommendations. No correspondence have been received on this application since referral to public hearing.
Great, thank you Clerk. Any speakers who want to speak to council on this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 73311 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. It will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Scott Erdman, rezoning planner, rezoning central planning, urban design and sustainability here to present the application. Clerk, I'm just wondering if there's anyone on the line at this point. I know we have no registered speakers. He's on my list. Just wanting to know if there are any registered speakers or anybody on the line at this point.
Yes, we have two registered speakers on the line at this point.
Got it. Okay. So Council, you know that there are registered speakers then, and they are on the line. So perhaps we should, you can wave, but I'm suggesting that we proceed with the presentation by Scott Erdman. Go ahead, Scott.
Just wanted to check that you can hear my voice and that you can see the presentation on your screen.
Yes, both are good.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Erdman and I'm the rezoning planner for this rezoning application on Canby Street. The site is located on the east side of Canby Street, spanning the block between 42nd and 43rd Avenue, directly across the street from Oak Ridge Center. The site is currently developed with low-rise commercial buildings with surface parking at the rear and is shown in red on the map. Blocks to the north are also zoned for commercial, while blocks to the east and south are zoned for residential. Sites on adjacent blocks have also recently been rezoned for high-density mixed-use developments. The neighborhood is rich in amenities with schools, parks, shopping and services within close proximity. The site is well-served by transit, being located one block away from the Oak Ridge 41st Avenue Canada Line Station and the R4 Rapid Bus Service along 41st Avenue. This proposal is being considered under the Canby Corridor Plan, which was adopted in 2018 following a comprehensive three-phase planning program. The site is located within the Oak Ridge Municipal Town Center and under the Canby Plan is anticipated to develop over time into a highly urban place with a variety of mixed uses, vibrant street life and dynamic new public spaces. At the heart of the Oak Ridge MTC are the alphabet blocks, A through H along Canby Street, as shown on the map. Each with site-specific height limits and with density based on urban design performance. The plan identifies this site as Area F and provides direction for future development to have active commercial uses at grade, a commercial podium and two towers on top with the higher tower up to 333 feet high. Sites A through H are all expected to deliver onsite amenities to serve growth in the MTC area. These amenities are to be negotiated as part of the rezoning process and include one or more of the following options: nonprofit office space, a youth center, childcare facilities and artist studios. All amenities are to be delivered turnkey to the city. This diagram illustrates the scale of development anticipated by the plan for this site. A major tower on the south end of the block can be considered up to 333 feet high for residential uses and a minor tower on the north end up to 120 feet or up to 150 feet if setbacks are included for commercial or residential rental uses. A four-story commercial podium with at-grade retail and services is expected. An additional partial story for common rooftop amenities can be considered under the plan's built form guidelines. The proposal before you tonight is for a 33-story residential building with 268 strata units and a 12-story office building over a shared four-story podium with ground floor commercial uses. The application meets the family room requirements and rooftop common amenity spaces are proposed for both buildings. A 37-space childcare facility and a youth center are proposed to be delivered to the city as in-kind public amenities in addition to a cash CAC. The proposal also includes a 3,229 square foot public plaza on the south end of the site and an overall density of 10.16 FSR. The application was received in October of 2019 and later revised in June and November of 2020. Processing time was extended due to these revisions and for the negotiation of the CAC and amenities. If approved, this project would generate over 1,100 off-site and onsite construction jobs. There are two in-kind public amenities proposed in this application. The first is a 37-space childcare facility located on Level 5 of the office tower and includes outdoor play space on the roof of the podium. The second is a 5,877 square foot youth center located on the second floor of the podium, which includes a lobby and street-level access next to the future public plaza. Both facilities would be delivered turnkey to the city. A city-hosted open house was held as an in-person event prior to COVID-19. Staff have received a total of five responses for this application. Feedback included support for the proposed height, massing and density. Comments included concerns regarding the building's design and for potential parking impacts on the neighborhood. Staff have reviewed the comments and have determined that the proposal meets the intended built form for this site under the plan. Conditions have been included to further improve the design of the proposal. This table notes the public benefits package proposed for this application. It includes a community amenity contribution in the form of a 37-space childcare facility, a youth center and $2.5 million in cash. In addition, the applicant will also be required to pay DCLs and provide a public art contribution, bringing the total value of the public benefits offering to just over $25.6 million. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Canby Corridor Plan and the proposed height, density, form and land uses are all consistent with what was anticipated in the plan for this location. This proposal includes a public benefits package valued at over $25 million, which includes a childcare facility and a youth center delivered turnkey to the city. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Chair Carr, it's the clerk here. I think you're on mute.
Absolutely right. Thank you, Scott Erdman. And I'm asking if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
This is Jeff Mock, IBI Group. I have nothing more to add to Scott's presentation. I'm here to take questions.
Great, that's fun. Then I will turn this over to questions, starting with Councilor Degenova. Go ahead, Councilor Degenova, up to five minutes.
Very much. These are very exciting amenities that are proposed with this application. And I'm wondering if there was any consideration of staff in the 37-space childcare facility and considering the proximity of transit? If there was any consideration for extended hours or 24-hour childcare? And/or if not yet, will that be a consideration in the future when council receives that policy?
Thank you, Councilor Degenova. I'm going to refer this question to my colleague Ada Russell Chan in Arts, Community Services and Culture Department.
Hi, this is Ada. I can answer this question. The childcare team is still engaging in research on best practices on the delivery of extended hour and overnight childcare. So there will be some recommendations that will be related to the upcoming childcare strategy. And all of this findings will be scheduled to be presented to council in March 2022. So there is nothing quite yet, but part of this is to find out a feasibility of a pilot to understand the opportunities around staffing and also some of the needs assessment that would empower operators to ensure services are appropriate to families' varied needs. So nothing at this point.
But this could, just to follow up, thank you very much. This could help to inform that policy or not maybe that policy, but this could help to inform staff as childcare moves forward. And just the other parts of the question was, is there a possibility or an opportunity that this could possibly be an extended hour or 24-hour site in the future?
Yeah, it might be part of something that we will be incorporating. And yes, we don't really know what that might be, but yes, we are aware of the sites that are coming up. So it might be part of the recommendations coming forward next spring.
So possibly is what I'm hearing. Thanks very much. Also, I have questions just generally about the turnkey aspect of these amenities coming to the city and the longevity and sustainability of those assets and how the city will, considering the great benefit to the community, how we will maintain these facilities, how we will continue to maintain them throughout their life, although they've been given to the city technically in this application, turnkey. There are costs associated, I understand, with maintenance and operations and especially towards the end of the life of a project. I know we're thinking about the beginning of it right now, but I have to think about it holistically. So perhaps staff could, could I ask Chair through you that staff comment on that? What the plan is to generate funds for that to sustain these amenities?
You're asking questions of staff? That's fine.
I just didn't hear anyone on the other line, so I wanted to make sure you were at least there, Chair. Thank you.
I'm here, but I'm sorry, I'm not sure which staffer is going to answer that question.
Maybe they're trying to decide who.
Thank you, Councilor. I'll defer to Ada again for this.
I will answer this. Actually, our facilities management or team looks after this. But typically, for any of the city ownership spaces, there's exactly, there's some operations that's related to this. So a typical model will entail an operator being responsible for the administration, programming operations of the facility and association facility costs. And that includes regular maintenance and repair. So the city would typically be responsible for major repairs and lifecycle replacement of major systems and structural components. And these are usually done when we do an assessment of what facilities requires that, those types of repairs. And they're done through a capital planning process.
Okay. And has there been consideration as to what those would be if instead the applicant was to sell or gift those to a nonprofit instead of the city? The capital costs?
Sorry, can you repeat? What do you mean by gifting?
I have 20 seconds left, so I'm not sure. I understand the city will receive these turnkey, but I understand also that there's other situations where we've, perhaps I'll ask for a second round to ask this last question then.
You have a chance to ask staff questions at the end as well, Councilor Degenova.
I'm happy to do that then. So I'll go off the queue. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilor Kirby Young, over to you for up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks. I'm curious about the amenities and I'm curious, I know that it specifies in the Canby Plan, it could be artist studios, could be youth center, childcare, et cetera. But I'm wondering why we landed on a youth center when the new community center is being delivered to the city as part of the Oak Ridge development will likely be completed prior to this. So I'm wondering why we would choose that over artist studios. And I do know that the projects adjacent with the hotel included some artist studios, but we're so short in the city. And I'm just wondering, could the community center not have served that purpose? Why a separate standalone, qualitatively small youth center? Anyone?
Hi, this is Ada again. So this youth center is separate and different from the community center. In the community center, there's more of the parks mandate and a lot of the youth that would go there would attend some of the activities that are provided there. This youth center is serviced by a nonprofit, so it's meant to be more of a social service center. And for that, there could be a range of activities such as providing information, referral, counseling, advocacy or healthcare services that could dispense in the aid of food or clothing or employment, a drop-in or activity space. And actually, in the original Oak Ridge Community Center, there was going to be provision to have a certain space for nonprofits to use if this youth center was not made, was not going to be constructed soon. So there is that kind of planning at that initial stage as well.
Do we have any other examples of youth center spaces that we've looked for operators for? Like who's a likely operator for this and are they likely to be able to operate this feasibly? This I believe to be a nonprofit, but again, it's relatively specialized in a small space.
It is not a really big space, but I guess the other example is the Broadway Youth and Resource Center on Broadway. And then, which is at Broadway and Fraser. And so there, there is a lot of youth-oriented programs and oftentimes are co-located with other youth program providers. And there, there's providing it as more of a hub model so that we might see something like this where there's shared space to provide like a very diverse type of space that's suited for the local youth. And I know that for the south area, there's not a lot of such programs here. So this is very good location, especially close proximity to transit and Oak Ridge Center.
Okay, was there, were artist studios considered? Was that part of, is it just that we didn't have a youth center and so we sort of looked at it from that perspective? Or did we compare and contrast the space available and the potential for artist studios here?
Thank you, Councilor. This is Scott Erdman again with planning. So this rezoning application was received close in timing to other adjacent rezoning applications. And there was a coordination done on the city's half in order to ensure that we had a mix of public amenities that were identified in the plan. So we wanted to make sure that there wasn't too much duplication. And we knew that the site to the south was going to be proposing the artist studios and a site to the north was going to be proposing the nonprofit office space. And so we felt that this was an appropriate site and location for the childcare facility and a youth center as part of trying to achieve as many amenities in the corridor as we can.
Do you envision, not to belabor this point, but do you envision it serving youth in the area or drawing in youth from other underserved areas like South Vancouver, for example, that a little further south, a little further east that, well, I've heard there's really need for that kind of service?
I'll refer to Ada for this question.
This is Ada again. We do see that with the growing population there, there will be a lot of need for this space and especially even existing space and services for this area for the youth is lacking. So we can see probably both the local youth as well as those that may come and arrive and come and go through transit in the South Vancouver area.
Thanks. And I'll pose a question to planning. If you don't get it all answered, I'll ask it later. But does staff comment on the aesthetics of this building? It's quite practical compared to some of the other designs that we've seen on board on this area?
And if this is to staff, there's only four seconds left. So perhaps you can repeat the question when we come to, okay, thank you. Counselor Boyle, go ahead up to five minutes.
Yeah, actually, I also had questions about the youth center and had just stayed on the list listening to Counselor Kirby Young ask all of them. So appreciated those answers and I will just keep thinking on it as we hear from speakers and come back if I have more. So.
Great. None for now, thanks. Thank you Counselor Boyle. Counselor Dominado?
Thanks Chair. You have a couple of questions, I guess, to staff and the applicant. The first question is on the subject of our target of thirty-five percent family-sized units. Just noting that it falls quite short of that, this proposal, twenty percent. And if staff and/or the applicant could comment on that.
Thank you Counselor. This is Scott Erdman. Just give me one moment, please. Yes, so this proposal does have a mix of different units with a seventy percent one-bedroom, twenty percent two-bedroom, and ten percent three-bedroom units. And it is a requirement for rezoning applications to deliver thirty-five percent family units with minimum twenty-five percent two-bedrooms and ten percent three-bedrooms. So staff have included conditions in the appendix and also in the draft CD one by law to ensure that the minimum family unit mix is met if the project moves forward.
So just to confirm what I've heard, that if council were to support this this evening, there absolutely would be at minimum thirty-five percent family-sized units?
That's correct. That's addressed in both the rezoning conditions and in the draft by law.
I guess a follow-up question is maybe it's to the applicant, why not address the and meet the policy intent upfront?
Wait, this is Jeff Mock, IBI Group. We had every intention to meet the meet the policies and I would probably look into meeting the the additional requirement.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I appreciate that. My other question is related to the youth center. Looking for a bit more clarity on this. Staff, you indicated a need for a youth center, then it was described more as a social service center for youth. Did we engage youth and consult them in this?
This is Ada again. We did talk to some of the service providers or who's provide programs for youth and they talked to their youth like themselves. So we did hear about the need for different types of programs and more spaces.
In that, we talked to, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, and just to say earlier on, it was also determined when the Canby Corridor Plan was being created, there was some of that discussion as well.
Do we, so, sorry, I'm going to drill down a little bit in terms of, so we engaged some service providers who do some work in this field, but did we actually do a focus group with youth in the community, whether it be in the neighborhood or more broadly in the city of Vancouver, to have their voice as part of this?
Yes, so when we do the programming, when we do the development permit where there's more detailed design, we will be doing more of that type of focus group to have a space that's designed specifically for for the youth who are in the area. So that will happen then and not really at the rezoning stage.
And given, okay, so I'm going to go back to this is, and I noted that, and just clarified, that the social service center or youth center is actually destined for a second floor. Was there a consideration given to ground level access and entry?
Yes, it was originally, we had wanted to have a street level access. But through the design, things had changed and we wanted to also have it on one floor. And so it was able to be accommodated on the second floor.
I'm going to, I'm going to go back to a question I think Counselor DeGenova was asking, which is around the opportunity for the city to transfer this to a not-for-profit, the youth center, as well as I think the childcare is what she was referring to.
If it can't be done in ten seconds, perhaps this can be done after as well and a second set of questions. We have five seconds staff. You can answer after though. Counselor DeGenova, I'm sorry, Counselor Dominado, would you be fine if you brought it up at the?
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Great. That's it for questions then. Thank you, everyone. And I'm just going to call for speakers at this point. Thank you staff and applicant for answering those questions. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code seven three three one one pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Any speakers in the council chambers, please also note you'll be able to come forward to the podium. So clerk, I wonder if you can confirm if there are any speakers on the line at this point or in the chambers?
There are no speakers in the chamber, but there is a speaker on the line, speaker number one.
Great. Speaker number one then, Tracy Moyer.
Madam Chair, are you able to hear me?
Yes, perfectly. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you. And I want to apologize to start with. I did not know there's a new rule about no same-day admissions for presentations on your screen. So staff, city clerk staff has kindly submitted my presentation as correspondence. So could I please give council a minute just to grab my correspondence that came in just a few moments ago?
And that would have been come in by email to us?
I don't know, however, it would have been recorded as correspondence.
Yes, council, we got a correspondence from David Yem at eight fifty-four on this. Thank you for making note of that, so.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear. Did you say from Tracy Moyer, you did receive a presentation as correspondence?
Yes, I did at eight fifty-four. It came from, I'm, the person who said it is our staff person and I noted his name. It was circulated to us by staff. But we do have it.
Okay. So thank you. May I start now?
Yes.
So good evening again, Madam Chair and council members. It's Tracy Moyer, Chair of Okerstlingare area residents. I mentioned earlier this evening that most times OLR does support rezoning applications when they follow the Canby Corridor Plan. However, we cannot when the planning process flawed. And in our opinion, this is the case here, and we speak in opposition to this application. Through you, phase two Canby Corridor Plan permitted rezoning applications on Canby Street and a few blocks on the cross streets at the Cataline Station. Station. Phase three, called it a few years later, and it was to address the areas behind or the areas inside the neighborhood, which are generally consisting of single-family homes. However, because of the city's affordability crisis, the city decided to open phase two for reconsideration during phase three planning. The result is the heights on Canby Street skyrocketed, but there is no affordable housing that was required in exchange for that extra height. This project is a good example of this. And this is where I'd like to draw your attention to the second page of the presentation or correspondence. This is a page from the booklet that OLR presented to council or provided to council for their decision on phase three in April of twenty eighteen. On the left side of the page is the city's rezoning application notification postcard under phase two in February twenty seventeen. And the print is tiny, so we have a little bit larger text in the lower left corner. And it basically says that it was for a ten-story and an eight-story mixed-use building. Then this changed in phase three, which is the right side of your page. And the plan was then allowing a thirty-four-story strata tower and an eight-story tower of the developer's choice, whether it's commercial or rental. The heights before you tonight are different yet. Again, you're now being considered, asked to consider a thirty-three-story strata and a twelve-story office tower. What benefits come from an additional twenty-three and four floors for a total of twenty-seven additional floors? Benefits are about eleven thousand square feet combined of the youth center and the childcare space and two hundred, two and a half million dollars CAC. These are needed as we densify, but they are not nearly adequate for the additional twenty-seven more floors on this project. OLR strongly opposes this project because of the flawed planning process to get from phase two to phase three to allow that significantly higher height with inadequate amenities in return. Also, the office tower exceeds the maximum height even under phase three. I do want to thank council, those that spoke about their questions about the youth center. We also questioned how well-suited and matched this is for the needs of the nearby community. These are going to be luxury strata buildings coming in under phase three. So we have yet to see a social housing, a phase three development come forward combined with strata. So we don't think we have the demand in our neighborhood now or even going forward. So we question if the youth center is well-matched for the needs of the community. And also, we really don't like the entrance on the ground floor there. We think it's an eyesore. And it just adds bulk to the back of the building, which of course people behind have to have to look at. And it makes the building so much bigger and massive to the back. Thank you council for your time and for your consideration this evening.
Great. Thank you, Tracy, very much for both coming and speaking to this and just sending, and well, thank you to staff for circulating, but we have, we do see your presentation. So appreciate that. You do have some questions from Counselor Weave. Go ahead Counselor Weave.
Yeah, can you talk about how the commercial tower doesn't fit in with the current guidelines?
It's two floors too tall.
So, and the maximum height in the guidelines that you were referencing comparative to the one that we have?
Ten, and this building is coming in at twelve.
And then in the community plan, it talks about a youth center or youth hub, I think is the term. Do you not see that a youth hub would help us build a complete community because recognizing that youth facilities are seem to be the first cut in any planning process?
If this is a youth center that is going to be geared for a lot of rich kids to help them occupy their time, then there is a need in our neighborhood. Again, what's typically being built in this neighborhood is luxury strata buildings. That's the bulk of it. We were supposed to have social housing landing in our phase three properties. And my understanding is there is yet to be one application that's going to come forward as a combined condo strata unit under what I want to call the original phase three. So not phase two that morphed into phase three on Canby and the cross streets around Cataline Stations. But the pure phase three, the single-family neighborhoods inside the neighborhoods, like houses inside the neighborhoods. You know, we're supposed to get social housing there, but that's not being considered. So you know, it might be a great space for a lot of young, rich kids to hang out in. There's probably a lot better need for other types of uses for that space.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks Counselor Weave. Counselor DeGenova, questions up to five minutes.
Thanks. Thanks Tracy. I'm, I just, I wasn't going to ask questions, but you had said young, rich kids. And I'm going to ask, do you think that those are the only people who live in this neighborhood or that would be served by this youth center? The reason I ask that is kind of mapping out where some of our youth resources are. Hearing from staff, Broadway Center, I'm very familiar and have long supported Covenant House. But looking at sort of specific services, even if it's a community center, some of them don't typically, some of them have a seniors focus. I'm just wondering, can you tell me, do you not think that there are people who may be in need, who maybe have different socioeconomic backgrounds close by to this youth center?
If the city is looking to put the youth center here as a social service to draw the majority of the people from other parts of the city, that's the city's decision. What I'm trying to relay is based on the population that's here now, we're very senior intense in the homes that have been around for a while. A lot of the people that are coming in though, in these new Canby Corridor developments, whether it's townhouses or condos, they have quite a bit of money to be able to afford to come and buy these places. So.
I understand that, but considering Marple's neighboring, oh, sorry, you weren't finished. I didn't mean to cut you off. The line cut out. Go ahead Tracy.
Again, that's the city's decision. If if the city decides to have services in the Oakridge area, perhaps to help Marple, that's fine. But if they're planning on putting that there because of kids at Oakridge, Oakridge is a pretty affluent area. Costs a lot of money to buy a townhouse or condo in Oakridge. And they may not be the young people that will take advantage of the services of a youth center.
Thanks so much for sharing your perspective.
Thank you very much, Counselor DeGenova. And thank you, Tracy Moyer. We are, I have separate questions for you, but thank you and as I say, for sending your presentation in as well. Clerk, do we have speaker two on the line, Leslie Race?
Chair, no, we do have no more speakers on the line and we do not have speakers in the chamber.
Thank you. Then I will proceed with the call out three times for more speakers. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code seven three three one one pound. And do that before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the chamber? So clerk, any speakers in the chamber or online?
We have no speakers on the line and no speakers in the chamber.
Great, thank you. And for a second time, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code seven three three one one pound before the close of speakers list. Then that phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Again, clerk, any speakers in the council chamber or online?
Chair, we have no more speakers in the chamber and no speakers on the line.
Great. Okay, then I'm going to do one final call. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code seven three three one one pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. And council, I will take a five-minute break to see if anyone does a call in. Okay, thank you, thank you, council. Welcome back. Clerk, I wonder if you could inform us if there are any speakers on the line or in the chambers to this item?
Yes, we have one, one person on the line.
Okay. If that person on the line could please state your name. Could the speaker on the line to the current item, please state your name? Clerk, perhaps you could double-check again?
Yes, we're checking with staff. Chair, it's the clerk. We do have somebody on the line. We have unmuted them, however, we can't seem to hear them, so we are just, the name of the speaker is Nathan.
Okay, clerk, perhaps you can advise us to, well, I'll give you a couple, at least a minute to see if we can't, if you can't figure out how to reach Nathan and make sure that he can be heard. So, just let me know when you either feel he's there or we have to give up.
Okay. We do hear him.
Hello?
Oh, hello. Is this Nathan?
Do you hear me? Yes.
Oh, yes, of course. Nathan Dervidovic. So, I do, we do hear you, and so go ahead. You can speak to council on this matter for up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair and members of council. I spoke about this issue before of the need for an entrance to the Canada Line from the east side of Canby Street, and this is another development on the east side of Canby Street. And it's not too late yet to open up the entrance on the east side of Canby Street. If council directs staff to negotiate that with TransLink or the Canada Line contractor, I presume S&amp;C Levalleian, and, you know, these stations are all being poorly designed and inferior to many other stations in Canada. And that's what happens when you try to save money and you build an inferior station and inferior exits, entrances, and then sometime in the future, you know, things would not work out. I mean, look what they're doing at the Grouard Station now. They want to close it for two years to build, to rebuild the station. Imagine all the, all the people in the West End and Cole Harbour, you know, that are going to have so many problems getting to the Skytrain, that they'll have to walk all the way to Granville Station. And so, here we have an opportunity to do it ahead of time and build the entrance on the east side of Canby, and it's just, it's just unbelievable that it's not being done and that staff is not pursuing that, or, you know, they don't know how it is done in other cities, maybe, or I don't know. But it's just, it's just another problem that's going to happen, you know? And plus, the whole Canby corridor plan, of course, is a vision plan, and it's failed us on many, many occasions. There's so many parts of the plans that are not appropriate in this age. The plan was basically done in 2017, you know, and so that, this is the whole problem we have. And somehow, either this council, or if not this council, the new council, 2022, will have to tackle these, all these problems, because it's just, just unmanageable the way, the way it is. Well, thank you very much for your help anyhow.
Well, thank you very much for your diligence in tracking so many issues at council and coming to speak to us. Very much appreciated. There are no questions for you, so thank you very much. Clerk, are there any other speakers on the line or in the chambers?
There are no more speakers on the line, and there are no speakers in the chamber.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Since there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Sorry, just one second. And in general, so overall, few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 p.m. today, so I suggest we now close the receipt of any further public comments, move on to hear closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to make a So, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Yeah, sure. It's Jeff Mock, IBI Group. Just wanted to state that we've been working on this project for, since 2000, or at least when I was involved in it, since 2017. And prior to that, we had a team work on the project when the, when the heights were lower, as the, as late, the, the previous caller. But we are in compliance with the, with the current Canby corridor plan. So, but, yeah, it's, it's been a, been a, been an interesting ride, so I hope to continue on with this project.
Okay, thank you for those comments. And staff, do you have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff, thank you.
Okay. There are some questions, though, and I will proceed through this, this question, sorry, this, this list of councillors. Council, just noting, we are at 9:37, and if we are going to go beyond 10 o'clock, I would need a motion to that effect, but Councilor Dijonova, you're up on the list first.
I'm actually going to just say right now that I won't be able to stay beyond 10:00 p.m. So, I'm, I'm just letting everyone know that, because I'm first up and I can use that in my comments there, Chair, but I'm not moving a motion. So, my questions, first of all, to staff, and specifically, real estate and facilities management, I'm just wondering, if you can share with us what the cop, the capital cost that would be charged back to a nonprofit, or would be included in rents, I would suppose, or a lease agreement with a nonprofit, as typically we would see? Would those include end-of-life to the building? So, if I can ask, ask that question and hope to have an answer back.
Thank you, Councilor Dijonova. I'm going to refer this question to my colleague Adrian Thompson in the city's Real Estate Services Department.
Thank you.
Sorry, could you repeat the question, Adrian Thompson?
Should I have some time to do that, Chair? If not, I'll move for a second round, but I'm not trying to run the clock out, considering the time constraints we're in.
Yeah, since they didn't, they didn't hear, I'm stopping your timer, Councilor Dijonova, to give you the chance.
All right, I'll try and be concise. I'm just wondering, if these are turnkey assets to the city, the childcare facility, as well as the youth center, then what specific costs would there be in not only maintenance charged to the city, but in capital cost, looking at end-of-life replacement that the city would be on the hook for? And would those costs be passed on to the nonprofit operator in the terms of the lease agreement with the city? And that's my question, Chair, sorry.
Yes, I got that. I've started your timer, but is staff, staff time to respond?
The costs that are generally borne are costs coming from, first of all, the, this would be part of a strata, so the strata portion would be, would be payable by the, by whoever is operating the amenity. I can't, I can't really comment on how the asset is dealt with at the very end of the lease.
You can speak to that, council. Hi, Cynthia Lau, Senior Planner, Rezoning Center. So, typically, as part of these projects, once the city does receive the asset, we enter into an RFP process where we look for a leasing for these sites. Lease is then negotiated. It includes a number of operating, operating amounts through that lease and how it's managed, as well as looking at, and that typically covers operating, and capital costs are typically borne by the city.
Thank you very much. I'm just wondering if you could tell me if those, those, all of those costs would be passed on to the nonprofit operator? Very aware of how it works. My question was, what are the costs? I mean, you have performance here. I'd just like to know what the projected costs are of that maintenance. As I was trying to ask, and I appreciate Councilor Dominado finishing my question, considering I ran out of time, was there consideration to either include a partnership or gift this to a nonprofit operator, as we've seen in rezoning applications in the past, instead of the city of Vancouver receiving a turnkey?
In these projects, we've been looking at taking these assets as turnkey, and these would be, could further be dealt with later on in the process under separate processes through our capital planning and other facilities management programs.
Okay, thanks. So, did you or did you not consult a nonprofit? Sorry, I just have to... Sorry, I just have to be direct with the timer.
Specifically on this, um, for this site, or are we talking about just a bit of clarification?
Specifically for this site, that's all I'm allowed to ask at a public hearing.
Specifically for this site, um, the, um, for having the asset, or are you speaking about the, we wouldn't, we haven't engaged in an operator for this site as of yet?
Okay, um, but had you considered, uh, gifting it or, uh, in conversations with the applicant about?
At this point, no.
Gifting it or selling it, okay, all right, thank you very much, I'm also wondering if, um, through engagement of youth, and I understand it's a bit ironic that most of them wouldn't be tuning in here tonight, I'm just wondering who will this center serve, and if you could tell me if second floor podium or second floor space is usually what we look at for nonprofit operators? My experience, but I want to make sure that I'm correct on the policy there.
Uh, we'll have Ada Chan Russell to begin with that question, thank you.
I have 30 seconds, so we'll see, maybe can I move for a second round, Chair, just in case I need it, in case?
All right, this is Ada again, um, so the youth that, uh, we're looking at is, um, those that might be seeking some sort of social service, so we, we have a lot of social services that are age-based, so these ones would be youth, so, um, just like similar to, um, the resource center, it could range from like counseling or certain drop-in programs, um, it could be employment, it could be a range of things that we'll have to, and through a, a operator selection, we will ask nonprofits to demonstrate how it's meeting, um, the youth in the area, so in South Vancouver and so on, so, um, and we know that Oakridge is a attractive area, so there will be people who are coming just outside the Oakridge area probably, um, and with the population growth, so those are the youth that we're expecting.
Great.
Thanks so much, that didn't answer my other question, I tried to move just before, but we'll see, maybe someone else will answer my podium first.
Okay, that, that's fine, thank you, and, um, just so that, uh, council is aware, um, there's no motion to extend this meeting, um, we will end at 10, but the backup date, uh, that is the next available date, Thursday, November 25th, that's 6:00 PM, um, so that's where we would conclude.
Would it be helpful if I moved a motion right now, that we move, um, the rest?
You don't need to, that is, that's, that's, that will be, that's the default, so, um, councillor Dominado.
Uh, thanks, Chair, um, I'm, um, it's a question to staff, um, around the, um, back to the youth center, and appreciate the additional elaboration on the thinking and that, that it was indicated that there will be consultation with youth, uh, further along, if this is approved, but I actually would like to see that in the conditions, and I just read through the conditions, and the conditions are really extensive in terms of what the design of this youth center will be already, like, it's actually very prescriptive, um, in terms of the number of rooms, the type of lighting, the, and so I, I want to add that in, and I'm looking for some guidance, because I would actually move the amendment this evening as a condition to be added to the, um, application, uh, but I wasn't sure which staff to reach out to, I was looking, I just, um, online here, uh, about making sure that that would be legal and sound, so if I could get some guidance there, that'd be great.
Staff?
Cynthia Lau, senior planner, and just to speak to that, um, so with all spaces that we do look to partner with nonprofits in the future through a lease agreement, those are all through, uh, RFP processes that typically, and they are, awarding of those spaces does come to council, we do conduct, uh, extensive consultation, and that's all, uh, insured through as part of our standard RFP processes, so, um, we will ensure that communities and youth are, um, included in that process.
Okay, so maybe I'll send some draft language through, um, and maybe you can someone could let me know who to send it to, um, around an added condition, could you give me that?
You can send it to you, councillor Dominado.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've got that, okay, is that it, councillor Dominado?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, hi, I have a number of questions, I'm going to move for a second round in case I don't get through them, can I do that now?
Second, councillor De Genova.
Thank you, that's great, all those in favor say aye? For a second round of questions?
Aye.
Uh, of any opposed, say nay? Okay, go ahead, and we'll carry on, um.
Thank you, so back on, yeah, back on the, the, the youth center, um, it feels very cart and horse to me, um, and councillor Dominado's point, very prescription, the design, is there any flexibility in the process of the sequencing that it, it not sort of be built out or demising walls, et cetera, but sort of the broader space be finished until, there could be a bit more of a sense from some operators of how the space might be utilized, like they may not want a delineated space or a demising wall or separate locations, because we haven't really heard the, any creative uses of this limited size space, so is, is there possibility there that that could be phased, for example, with the applicant, where they complete through the drywall in the space, but could do phasing, that's a bit more subject to sort of a, a purpose-built delivery of services for youth? Is that determined?
This is Ada, um, and, um, again, um, yeah, what I was meant to say earlier was, um, exactly to this point, right now, there, it's, uh, the design is, uh, kind of open, and the way we have written the conditions, it was to say that it would include these elements, and not exactly where it would be given that we do, um, engage with the nonprofits to kind of find out what the adjacencies are, um, and through that, consult with the, with the youth, because when we did have some preliminary discussions with providers, they talked to the youth who go to attend their programs to provide some of those feedback, um, which is how we got to this initial stage where we put those elements, but not, um, we will get more of those details in the development process after the rezoning is approved.
So sorry, you said they talked to you, they talked, they did talk to you?
Yes, the providers did, yeah, they, through them, we did engage with youth through the, the providers.
Can you give us an example of a type of service, like if you don't feel comfortable naming one, but I, I'm just trying to get a bit of perspective around what type of service?
Um, I mean, some of them could be, um, kind of like helping with employment, uh, some of them could be through like cooking programs and drop-in programs where there's more of a connections as well, um, so those are a couple of them that might, um, be offered.
Okay, um, taking a different tack on the, sorry, on the amenity space, I know our childcare regulations require the access to outdoor space, and the childcare is on the fifth floor with the outdoor space, is another possibility, could the, based on the second floor designated for the youth center be utilized for childcare if that childcare space had access to the fifth floor outdoor space also?
Um, sorry, so the youth center, um, has a balcony only, but it's on the other side of the, of the development. Um, right now, the youth center, um, is, the entrance to the youth center to go up to the second floor is right adjacent to the plaza, so what we were hoping is to have, uh, some of the youth elements animated there, so the youth can, um, kind of also use the space for a sense of ownership in the, in the community.
Sorry, maybe my question isn't clear, if there was no youth center, could this space be used for additional childcare? Um, and the childcare would have, their outdoor access would be on the fifth floor?
Uh, there's not big enough indoor and outdoor space in this section to, um, accommodate the childcare, we actually looked at having, um, childcare on this part of the development, and there was a lot of sun shade there, so there wouldn't, there would be too shadowed and not appropriate for outdoor use.
I, I under, I understand that, I was asking if they could share the fifth floor space, perhaps, perhaps it's late, and I'm not being clear on my question, but I feel like you're answering maybe a different question than what I'm posing? Is it not, is my question not clear, because the, the space, let me rephrase, maybe that will help, the space on the fifth floor has been deemed appropriate for childcare, and I'm asking, is that sufficiently large that if there were more childcare spaces on the second floor, I'm not suggesting there would be outdoor space there, but they could use the space on the fifth floor?
Oh, um, yeah, it would need to be a contiguous place on one level when we do childcare, because of the staffing, um, and having the supervision and having one, um, nonprofit, uh, supervise that space as per our, um, childcare design guidelines.
I'm going to look back for another question, thank you.
Okay, thanks councillor Kirby Young, um, over to you councillor Weave. I'm just trying to advance you, I'm so sorry, um, go ahead.
Um, you have a few questions, one, we talked about the unit mix, um, and the change of it, normally in the development statistics, staff recommend if they have changes in a revised development, is that something that wasn't included in this reason, this presentation for a reason? And I guess second question on that, can you talk about, there's been a change in the way we present our public benefits achieved in progress, um, looking at the ones we've had in July, I like that we can actually click on the former approved reports, I like the view, um, I'm wondering, the progress is tough to really understand where we're at at the progress, can you talk about the changes in how we are displaying our public benefits achieved and in progress in this report?
Okay, uh, thank you for your questions councillor, regarding unit mix, there are a number of ways which that unit mix can be secured, uh, with this project, uh, it's, it's, uh, written into the CD1 bylaw, that, um, and will be, yes, secured as part of rezoning enactment, that that minimum 35% family units as part of the family room policy, um, must be achieved, so that the, the project won't be able to proceed further unless they provide that, and that's, the bylaw is the security for that.
Okay, but I have seen sometimes staff will put a third column in the development statistics on recommended, if they want to see a change from the proposed development to a recommended, um, under unit mix, I was just wondering why it wasn't there, and then just, can you talk a little bit about the changes that have been made to the presentation of the public realms in this report compared to previous reports?
Hi councillor Cynthia Lau, again, um, in regards to the unit mix, there's why it wasn't in recommendation, it's actually, because we have a stronger way of managing it through the bylaw, and it is clearly written in the CD1 bylaw, so it will be, um, managed through development permit very clearly in that way. As for your second item, uh, so, um, I appreciate there's a lot of information to try to squeeze onto the one and a half pages we do for the public benefits, uh, update, so if you would like further information, we can send you a memo afterwards.
Yeah, I know, I like, I like components of it, I like it reads better, I do like the fact there's length to it, it's just the progress side, I find, um, doesn't give us as much information.
I appreciate that, it's hard to get that much detail in that one little bar graph, but we'll do our best in following up with a memo to you.
Yeah, um, we had a comment on Skytrain entrance on the east side of Canby, has that been something that has been discussed as an opportunity moving forward, or is that not something we're contemplating?
So, um, again, this is Scott Erdman, the, the Canada Line station at Oakridge and 41st Avenue, uh, currently it has one entrance at the southwest corner, however, the station was designed as, purposefully, to have a second entrance in the future, um, but it was designed for that second entrance to be at the northwest corner, uh, and so any future rezoning applications that come forward at that site will be required to, to allocate space for a second entrance.
Okay, so above the, the current TD Bank?
Uh, that's right, at the, at the northwest corner.
At that corner, okay, yeah, um, perfect, thanks a lot.
Great, councillor Weave, that's great, thank you.
Actually, I got, sorry, one more question, um, the, one of the speakers talked about the commercial building being higher than the community plan, can you talk to that?
Omar Aljouwe, development planner, um, the, uh, the commercial, a minor tower is at 150 feet high, which is, uh, in line with the policy.
Okay, so we heard that 10 stories, 12 stories, but it's actually a height in feet that is the current plan?
Correct, it's in feet.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Great, thank you councillor Weave, um, councillor, uh, we are, um, at, uh, 9:56, if there is going to be any motion at all, it should be stated now, I'm just, I can advance.
I've sent in a motion in writing, Chair.
Could you, do you want to, do, would you like a point of, uh?
Oh, sorry, a point of procedure.
Uh, yes, okay, I hear a point of procedure from you.
I have sent in a motion in writing, how would you like me to put that forward, I see I'm not on the queue.
No, but you've called a point of parliamentary procedure, so I will, I will hear that point of procedure, you've sent in a motion if you'd like to speak to it, and now is the time.
I've sent in a motion, and because there are many questions, and this is a matter that needs to be carefully, um, considered, I'm proposing that council refer debate and decision, uh, for CDI, uh, rezoning 58, or 5812 to 5844 Canby Street to November 25th at 6:00 PM, and I'm, I didn't include the year, but if you want, I can send that.
I think that will be found, I think we all understand that, thank you councillor De Genova, um, and, uh, I have conferred with the clerk council and the fact that, that, um, uh, you did pass, um, a motion to have a second round of questions, that that will still stand as well, um, there did not need to be additional language in councillor De Genova's referral motion, um, so I'm going to just deal with that referral motion, um, and, uh, ask, anybody's free to speak to it, but, um, but I'm not hearing any voices on that, so, and we have a standing speaker for this right now, so I'm just going to call for yays and nays on that, those in favor of councillor De Genova's referral motion, say yea?
Yea.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, that's, um, that is now carried unanimously, and, um, councillor Kirby Young, you, I guess you do have technically two minutes, but, um, you can start now, or you can start at the beginning of, uh, the, um, meeting, um, on, uh, November 25th.
Um, I'll, I'll start quickly, um, with respect to the, so the roadway and the potential station, but I know that even the, the secondary station entrance are both on the west side of the street, and there's a lot of density going in on the east side, what's, um, the plan in terms of not just having people cross it, 41st, is there any additional crossing ability or infrastructure plan for 42nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th?
Thank you councillor, um, we, we don't have any additional.
I think we're at 10 o'clock, you may have to answer that last time, next time, but.
9, 9:59, but, well, it can be, you can start by answering that question next time, you can start now, I think, we'll leave it up to you.
I'll wait until next time, then, when we have more time to, to, to finish this fully.
Yeah, and councillor Kirby Young said that was fine too, okay, council, um, there will, we will start the list with councillor Kirby Young, and, who was just at 48 seconds, and, well, actually 40, and, uh, and councillor De Genova's next on the list, and, um, and then continue with the second round, followed by debate and decision, so, um, thank you clerks, thank you council, and, uh, we will, it's all staff, um, and have a good evening.
Hi, thank you.
Good night.